Zoning Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting, Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, specifically on January 15th, 2025. Proper notice was sent to the Currier News, Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk for the county of Bridgewater and posted on the Municipal Bulletin Board. Please be aware of the zoning board of adjustment policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 PM and no new testimony will take in after 10:00. If you're able, please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Nancy, welcome back. Good to see you. Give a roll call, please.
Chairman Foose.
Here.
Mr. Wiley.
I'm here.
Mrs. Amin.
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Fresco.
Yep.
Mr. Bonjourno.
Yeah.
Mr. Gieske.
Yeah.
Mr. Seacat.
Yeah.
Mr. Kulak.
Yeah.
Mr. Vesio. And Mr. Gabbit.
Yeah.
For the record, Rich Aller, board attorneys present, Bill Burr, board engineer present, and Catherine Sarmad, board planner also present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. This is the open public meeting section of the meeting. If anyone would like to speak on any matter not on our agenda, you can approach the microphone. This is the time to do that. All right. I have one very quick item. I got a call from a resident last night about a number of trees being removed on a project being done by the county on Vosler Avenue, currently to access Hawk Point, the Washington Valley Park system. You come down Miller Lane, it's a kind of a curvy road, apparently, and in front of you and out in the audience, you can see the pictures I took today. I pulled the contract. It's contract 25001 with Somerset County. It's for $946,000, and in that contract, it stipulates that 34 trees will be removed. Now, when I tell you, when I went to this site today, I literally almost fell to my knees because this board works tirelessly, and thank you for everyone for volunteering their time. It's more than just these meetings. We have meetings with the township, with, it's just incredible amount of hours go in by every member, and I can't thank you enough. And it really all revolves around this, what's on the screen. It's about saving the trees, it's about saving our town, it's about saving the quality of life. And to see 34 quote-unquote "trees" that were destroyed to make a new road where a road already exists, and to spend almost a million dollars to do it, there's just no way that this was only 34 trees. So I went to the county commissioners' meeting tonight, they did a collective shrug, they didn't really know what I was talking about. But I know Mr. Burr went out as well to look at the project today. Thank you for taking time. I don't want to put you on the spot because none of us are arborists, but I did pull the satellites, I pulled different, five different sets of satellites, and I also went to Google and I pulled a set of satellite data images. Bill, I have over 300 trees, easy, that were removed, and you don't have to speak to this, it's up to you, but can we collectively agree this was more than 34 trees?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I did, Mr. Chairman, visit the site, took the plans with me. They definitely took more than 34 trees down. The evidence is not really existing anymore because it's just ground-up mulch piles everywhere, but yeah, we're actively looking into it. We're doing the same thing that you did, we're trying to go back into the aerials and review how many trees we think existed, trying to look at surveys, just trying to get a handle on it because it sure does look like there was more than 34 trees taken down.
Bill, and we had an applicant a number of years ago, I won't mention their name, but they did cut down more trees than were allowed under their resolution after we memorialized it, and we went back, Scarlett helped me, we pulled satellite imagery, and we were able to successfully find, it was five figures in fines we pulled from this. I'm going to ask that you and Catherine and maybe Tom Genova and Mike Pappas collectively work. I'd like my 343 trees back. If it's more, I want more trees back. Because this property is in the open space register and it also has a green acre state of New Jersey sign on it, I feel that there may be a mechanism to claw back monies, and if we are able to collect money from the county for this, you know, I'll volunteer time with anyone that wants to help out to get these trees replanted all over the township and hopefully back on this property because I know that Vosler and Route 22, after Ida, we literally had someone die that was swept from their car. We had a UPS driver that pulled somebody out of their car, and I know you worked extensively getting Vosler fixed up. I think the town spent almost $900,000 on that road. So I guess it's a work in progress. If anyone wants to go and visit it, it's pretty jarring, and that's my comment. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, thanks. Thanks for the time, everyone. We have a few minutes for approval. We have August 12th, 2025, August 26th, 2025, and September 9th, 2025. Comments or changes?
I've had changes to one of them, and I gave it to Nancy.
Okay.
I have some editorial revisions from Mrs. Amin on the August 26th draft, so those will be made and we can adopt them with edits. As, they're just editorial revisions, and it's just August 26th. The other two, there were no comments unless anyone has comments now.
Okay. Do you have a motion on the group of three sets of minutes?
I move that we pass them.
All right, I have a motion to pass all three minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
How is Mr. Bonjourno?
Do you want a roll call on that?
Yes, please.
Chairman Foose.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mrs. Amin.
Yes.
Mr. Fresco.
Yes.
Mr. Bonjourno.
Yes.
Mr. Gieske.
Eligible.
Mr. Seacat.
Yes.
Mr. Kulak.
Yes.
And Mr. Gabbit.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Resolutions, let's do Germunk Oil first, 24 Fenderin Avenue. Comments or changes?
I have a couple. Most are just like small word modifications, like application becomes applicant in one place, but paragraph 24 and 25 are duplicative, so I'm going to take out 25. Got it. Other than that, no changes.
Get a motion on Germunk Oil, please.
Yeah, move with the change.
All right, there's a motion to pass, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bonjourno.
Chairman Foose.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mrs. Amin.
Yes.
Mr. Bonjourno.
Yes.
Mr. Seacat.
Yes.
Miss, that's, that's it. That was everyone who's up.
All right. Next up, 821 Hawthorne Avenue. Comments or changes?
None.
Motion, please.
Yeah, move.
Motion to approve, Mr. Waddely. Second?
Second.
Mr. Bonjourno.
Chairman Foose.
Yes.
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 All right, last up, we have 160 Oak Street. Comments or changes to the resolution?
None.
Give a motion, please.
Yeah, move.
Second?
Second.
All right.
Chairman Foose.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mrs. Amin.
Yes.
Mr. Bonjourno.
Yes.
Mr. Seacat.
Yes.
And Mr. Kulak.
Yes.
All right, next up are applications. We're going to do 14 Gateshead Drive first.
Hi there.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
My name is Anthony Wagar. I am here with my wife Emily Wagar, and we live at...
Before you get too far...
This is new to me, I apologize.
I don't want you to have to do it twice.
Okay.
So who will we have testify?
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Tombalacki, and I'm an attorney from Weiner Law Group. I'm helping out Mr. Wagar this evening. So tonight, we're going to have Anthony Wagar, the applicant and owner of the property. He's going to be testifying, given the board an introduction as to his property, who he is, why he wants the pool, why he's doing what he's doing. And then we also have two, we have Angelo Oneello, O-N-E-L-L-O, who's our professional engineer, who's going to be testifying to address drainage and, you know, technical engineering aspects of the application. And belts and suspenders, we have our landscape architect, Tom Fitzsimmons, who we don't anticipate testifying, but if the board has any questions about the extent of the landscaping, which hopefully you're going to be impressed by the amount of landscaping we're putting in, he's here to answer any technical question about the planting species, et cetera, et cetera. So without further ado, unless the board has any questions about the notice and whatnot, I'd like to...
Before we even get there, I'll swear in your witnesses, but just for the record, I can state that I've reviewed the notices, and they were served properly on time and published on time, and so the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you very much, Mr. Aller. We're going to get all the, are we going to swear on Mr. Aller all at one time or one at a time?
What do you have?
I have Mr. Wagar, Mr. Oneello, the engineer, and then Mr. Fitzsimmons, who may testify if the board has questions.
So let's just take them up as they come, okay?
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's fine. So would you raise your right hand, please, to you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, would you state your name, spell your last name, please?
Yes, my name is Anthony Wagar, and it's spelled D-W-A-G-A-R.
Thank you, Mr. Wagar.
Thank you.
Mr. Wagar, this is your application, it's your property. Why don't you introduce yourself to the board, talk about who you are, what your property is all about, why you're doing what you're doing, the thought process that went into it, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Well, again, thank you. So we are residents here in Martinsville, section of Bridgewater. We've been here for just a little under four years. We wanted to put a pool, an in-ground pool into our backyard. It's been a long-term family dream of ours, finally at a point where we're able to do it, and we started the process, looking into it about a year ago, started going through the application process, and as we went into doing this, we realized that we were in exceedance of our impervious cover. I found out about that last year when we started the application prep, Nancy, she had helped us with that. So we started looking into ways of, you know, how could we put this pool in and still be sensitive to the impact, to impervious cover. We tried to do a lot of offsets, reduce size of the patio, take out a portion of the driveway, take out some gravel patio, just anything that we could do that we thought the board might feel was reasonable and warranted for the existing impervious cover that we discovered when we looked into it a year ago. Total impervious cover that we're looking to offset, we're looking to take out, close to 600 square feet of it. It puts us at about 316 square feet above the existing impervious cover. Like I said, it's something we're really excited to do, we want to do everything by the book, the right way, come before the board. I want to just take a quick minute to, you know, I heard chairman of the board talk about, you know, preserving the beautiful characteristics and things that we have here in this town, and we want to do that as well. We're sensitive to it, and, you know, we're community members, I'm a volunteer firefighter, I'm over at Vosler all the time responding to brush fires and things, so I'm before you, letting you know that I recognize the character of this town and how, what we need to do to preserve it, so I want to have as little impact as possible. So I thank the board for carving out some time for us. It's all new to me, a lot of the nomenclature, which is why I have some of the help from my friends here. So if there's any questions you have of me, any questions that I can go further?
Mr. Wagar, one of the issues that I brought up in the review reports is that the, right now, before you do any of this work, you exceed impervious coverage on the property.
I do, yes.
Now, when you bought the property, or since you've purchased the property, have you, was any of that impervious coverage attributable to actions that you've taken, or was that the condition when you bought the property?
Nothing that I've done, everything was the way it was when I bought it. I look back in like satellite photos and everything, it looks like it was that way since 95, around when the home was built. So I only discovered this a year, like when I first started the application process for the pool.
And to set the stage before Angelo provides engineering testimony, can you describe currently, when it rains on your property? Are you having issues with water going onto your neighbor's property, flooding them, adversely impacting? Explain to the board what the, before you do anything on the property, what's the current situation involving your property in relation to your neighboring properties?
So Papen Road is the, so we're in Gateshead, Papen Road is the top, so we're kind of on a mountain, not a mountainside, but it definitely slopes downward, so rain flows from the top of Papen, it goes through seven or eight houses, goes through our house, through our backyard, that goes down to the neighbor, so it flows all the way down until it gets down to the cul-de-sac. There's storm drains throughout the streets, so water flows from the top all the way down through up gradient properties to down gradient through my property. I'm not aware of any flooding that we have. I mean, when it rains heavy, yeah, it goes into the woods and, you know, you see puddles and stuff, but it's...
This is in the four years since you've owned the property, your neighbors haven't come knocked on the door and said, Anthony, what are you doing?
No, no. I mean, it's been the same since I moved in.
Very good. Unless the board has any questions for Mr. Wagar, again, he'll be here the entire evening, but I'd like to have Mr. Oneello, the engineer, explain the engineering that went into the design and what's being proposed. Again, Mr. Wagar will be here to answer any questions. Yes, sir?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the side of the house, the asphalt drive.
Yes.
How wide is that?
I think it's about 28 feet across because when I went to figure out how much I could remove and not be into the actual house, to the garage, I measured across. So it's 28 feet roughly across the driveway width.
Maybe this is for the engineer, but if you shorten the width by one or two feet, that might bring you into compliance, no?
It definitely could. I don't think I'll ever get below the 18%. I really don't, with even taking a lot of that, but I don't know. I don't know the calculations on...
I think you got to get to the 22.5, not the 18.
Hmm.
That's already approved, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, it wasn't necessarily approved before. There's no testimony that it was previously approved, just that that's how we bought it.
Yeah, that's how I bought it. That's true. So I don't, I take as much of the driveway as I can before I come into my home, you know? So that's what I tried to calculate, you know, when we looked at the driveway, and then I'm taking another patio out completely, doing the best I can to have as little impact as possible. Like from when I bought it to where what we're proposing is less than a 1% increase, and I'm trying to squeeze that as much as I can.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the public, questions for Mr. Wagar in his testimony? All right, seen none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My next witness is Angelo Oneello, professional engineer.
Sure. Is this, this can pick me up okay? I'll speak loudly.
Okay.
So Mr. Oneello, would you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear that the testimony you'll give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And spell your last name for the record, please.
O-N-E-L-L-O, that's Oneello, Angelo Oneello, New Jersey License Engineer, number 49284. The address of 5 Beechnut Street in Hillsdale, New Jersey, 07642. Angelo, have you had the pleasure of testifying before this board before? Not this board specifically. Okay, so give the board, you're currently licensed, you mentioned? Yes. And your license is in good standing? It is. And you were previously qualified as an expert in civil engineering before other land use boards in the state? Without, throughout North Jersey, without a doubt. Unless the board has any questions about his expertise, I'd ask him to be considered an expert.
Unless the board has any objection to accepting Mr. Oneello, we accept him. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Oneello, this plan was drawn by your colleague Jeff Agarion, correct? Yes. And you've had an opportunity to review these plans and speak with Mr. Agarion about all the design thought that went into it? Yes, we've thoroughly reviewed the plan together. So having reviewed the materials, the review reports, can you give the board an overview as to like the engineering side of what's going into this project, the property, and some thoughts on how to respond to the board's professional comments? Absolutely. The plan we have before you, for the record, is looking at specifically drawing number two of the engineering plan prepared by DJ Agarion Associates. Drawing number two is titled Pool Location and Grading Plan for the Wagar Residence, 14 Gateshead Drive, Block 652, Lot 133, Township of Bridgewater, Somerset County, New Jersey. Its original plan date is October 18 of '24, which is approximately one year ago, last revised in May 9 of 2025. The subject property we have before us is a pre-existing condition, slightly undersized property of just over one acre, and within the area of proposed development, the pool and the patio, there is approximately five and a half to six feet of elevation differential. A slopes analysis was performed, it's within the 0% to 10% range, so it's nothing earth-shaking, no pun intended, to put a modest-sized patio and pool here. Typically, a swimming pool on a one-acre property may be 20 by 40 or 800 square feet. In this case, the pool water surface is approximately 743 square feet, and the patio being proposed is 755 square feet, and of course, you have the pool coping, which is a very narrow strip of impervious area, if you will, but it's counted nonetheless. The pool and the patio, we'll start with the patio, generally would be more of the 1,000 to 1,200 square foot range. This is, including the coping, it's around 900 square feet, so less than 1,000. As the plan calls for, a section of driveway is proposed to be removed, which has a direct benefit as it's taken away from the contiguous impervious area, thus that if you use the bucket of water analogy, maybe we dumped a bucket of water on the driveway, it was to run down yonder, in this case, plan up or south, southeast direction, it will help mitigate the amount of runoff coming from this contiguous flow of stormwater runoff from the impervious area. There was a question about the width of the driveway, I measure it to be about 28, 29 feet. However, we should note that the back out for the driveway, preferably for home of the size, should be around 32 feet plus or minus, so the 28 feet is, you know, the fact that it works is pretty good, but I wouldn't really recommend narrowing the driveway. I like how the plan does call for removing a section of asphalt beyond the driveway itself, I mean, at the end of the driveway. Now, you've had an opportunity to review the review reports, and there was issues about mitigating stormwater impacts. Can you talk about, based on your review of this plan, what stormwater impacts are potential? I mean, Mr. Wagar testified that right now he's not experiencing any issues, but can you describe the word, some suggestions as to how the water that's going to be runoffed by this additional previous will be captured perhaps by landscaping or other means? Can you just go into that? Sure. So based on my review of the property, it's a swath of landscaped area, excuse me, a swath of lawn within the rear yard. The entire surroundings are predominantly thick, hardy woods, especially to the southeast beyond the rear line, and much of the portions of the adjacent property to the north, northeast here in the rear yard. Currently, the lawn areas and much of the driveway, including the roof gutters, will spit out onto the lawn and then make their way down into the wooded areas. I find really no current impacts or no concerns to begin with. The pool patio area is free-form shaped and at a very shallow pitch, it should runoff very slowly into quite a plethora of landscape plantings. I've had the privy to review some of the proposed landscaping around the pool, and it's quite hardy within an area that is currently no landscaping at all. Okay. Do you want to at least give the board a, we have the landscape architect here, but if you want to at least give an idea of the board what type of landscaping Mr. Wagar is proposing around the pool? Can you do that? You can show it. This, we have an exhibit that our landscape architect prepared yesterday, so we unfortunately didn't have an opportunity to present it to the board.
I'm going to mark it A1, we'll put it on the easel.
Thank you so much. But we just wanted to see the extent of the plantings that are being proposed.
Mr. Oneello, if you would, please just mark that A1 with today's date.
Marking the plan A1, and... Now, appreciating at this distance, it's hard for the board members to see, but so can you just verbally describe what is being shown on that plan? Sure, it's basically the near verbatim image because we are using the same CAD files as the landscape designer. We have the patio, the pool with the shallow beach entry, and you'll see that all this dense little circles and squigglies, if you will, are the significant amount of plantings with a full schedule of plantings. You'll see that beyond the patio areas and the pool itself, now keep in mind that water doesn't run off the pool, it will stay in the pool, but the patio areas are all draining into the edges, which are heavily planted with landscaping, especially the sloped area beyond the pool itself. Mr. Oneello, I mean, how would that landscaping help capture any additional runoff caused by the impervious coverage? Sure, so again, a good chunk of the driveway is cut off, which originally went onto the lawn, so that's going to help in that regard in a point source specific location. The patio itself, much of it is to drain into the perimeter of the patio, which is much of, I think everybody's seen a nice lush pool scape, that the gravels and the mulches and the plants themselves, especially during the summer season, will suck up the waters. So total belts and suspenders, with this, on behalf of the applicant, would the applicant be willing to work with the township engineer to provide some type of engineered solution to the extent that there's any suggestion that there's any runoff that needs to be further captured? Sure, I mean, I understand this is a variance application and anything's possible. However, the plans put forth with the landscaping and the patio, which is the free-form area with the curvatures, and the reduction of the impervious area from the driveway itself, I believe the presented design will work well from a stormwater standpoint, but beyond that, I mean, we could implement other measures if the township engineer requests it.
I have no further question of Mr. Oneello. Thank you. Board members, questions for Mr. Oneello? Board professionals? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Amin.
I have a question.
Please.
On the previous drawing, the driveway extends beyond the house, maybe like 30, 35 feet or something like that?
On the edge of the house?
Yeah, 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 back of the house. Why is it extending? Can you remove a little bit more of it, or is it...
The length of reduction is approximately 10 to 12 feet, so if built as proposed, meaning that this section was removed, it would extend beyond the house approximately 24 feet, 24 to 25 feet, with, for all intensive purposes, the width of a parking area driveline.
So the question I have is, do you need that much, because is there a garage on the side, on that side?
It's the garage.
Do you need that much of the driveway going back, or can you make it smaller?
Anthony, since you can, I think you can better answer that question. Why don't you address Mrs. Amin's question?
That's where my garage is. It's right there. So there is a little extension there where we park the cars, because I have a truck and I can't fit it into the driveway, but I can come up at least 10 feet to take the driveway away, so, which is fine, I'm willing to do that because I know I have to offset, and that's the fair thing. So maybe I could, I looked at it today and I measured again, because I said, what's the max I could do? There's also a gate there, so I have to take some of the fence down also to remove this driveway, and there's a gate there as well, so I'm taking the fence, basketball hoop and pole, and I can still just get a car there right by the garage. So I could probably do, and I calculated this, hopefully I did it right, another 53 square feet in addition to what we're proposing. If you think that's fair, I'm more than willing to...
This would require you to remove your basketball court?
I have to, it's not a court, it's just a pole at the end of the driveway. I'm going to have to do it anyway because you can't really play basketball if there's nothing there.
And this is all to prevent water from, how many acres of woods are behind your house?
There's so many, it's like green acres behind my, behind there. I don't own the property, the town does, I think, or the county does. So there's, it's protected, green...
house?
There's so many, it's like green acres behind my, behind there. I don't own the property, the town does, I think, or the county does. So, there's, it's protected, green.
No one's ever building back there.
No, they can't, it's Running Brook.
Everything that you're doing is just, the water's just going to keep going back into the woods, right?
Yeah, but I want to do what.
Understand, I just want to make sure I enter, like, the impervious coverage, where the water's still going to go back into the woods.
And it has and always will, but.
You're not doing anything that's sending water anywhere other than back into the woods, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We don't want to demand that you take out your basketball court.
No, no, but I kind of, to take that, to take that section of the driveway out, I kind of have to, because you can't, you know, it'll be turned back into grass.
Right.
That section, which is fine, it's no big deal. It's not, you know.
To Board Member Gajewski's point, though, I mean, it's really, really not going to change the volumetric measurement of water that's going anywhere, you know?
No, but.
I don't want you to leave here thinking that that board made us take out our basketball hoop, because.
No, I mean, it's.
Believe me, Chairman.
Yeah.
You wouldn't believe the amount of thought that went into.
Yes, please.
The second question I have is for the engineer. Mr. Engineer, when you need to drain the pool, let's say sometime in, before winter, you're closing and you want to take out some water from the pool, where will that water be drained out? Where do you?
Talking about when the pool's cleaned out with the backwash filter?
Or no, where, if the pool needs to be emptied, where does the water discharge to?
Now, where do you discharge the water?
Typically, you would put it onto the driveway. I mean, you see everybody puts it into the streets, but in this particular instance, it would just be pumped into the wooded area, all over the lawn.
Uh-huh.
But that's.
Onto the lawn, okay.
How often is that typically done with a residential pool?
Very rarely. Maybe a little bit for the cleaning purposes, very rarely is completely emptied.
Can you show us on the plans where the equipment is going to be? I'm having a hard time seeing it.
Sure. On the, to the rear of the residence, in the notch, on the northeast, the inner northeast corner, where currently there's a generator and there's billcoat doors and appear to be two air conditioner condenser units. It's appropriate, appropriate location. It does add 32 square feet approximately, but it's surrounded by, it's de minimis, it's non-contiguous impervious area.
Thank you.
And when you need more water in the pool, do you have something that fills up the pool from the house?
What's the water, the pool supply, like, when water needs to be added to the pool? What's the mechanism for filling the pool?
Usually, you use the hoses and spigot from the residence, and when it's originally filled, you need a large volume of water, you'll have a pool water truck come and fill it up like that quick.
Okay. So, that house has like a well, or is it an American Water Company?
City water, I have city water, so I use my, American Water Company, is my utility?
Do you have, do you get water into your house?
Yes, I pay for the water. I don't have a potable well at my residence, so I have, through American Water Company is who supplies my water, and I pay for the usage.
Okay.
That's all we have, Chairman.
All right. Any other board members? Everybody good? Board professionals?
So, just so, I'd raise some questions about the pre-existing non-conformities in my review memo and, or in the joint review memo. And just so the board, I guess, has the full picture, Bridgewater Township has, and I did not put this in the review because I did a little extra legwork after the review was issued, but I pulled the subdivision map for this property, and this was done as a cluster subdivision. So, if you looked at the most recent master plan, we actually included it as an attachment because there have been a lot of cluster subdivisions. Cluster subdivisions mean that the properties that were subdivided, as long, most cases, if they provided an open space dedication to the township, usually land that was encumbered by wetlands and things, on the larger piece of property, if they subdivided into less properties in order to give that open space, they got the benefit of smaller lot areas than required by the zone. So, this is an R50 zone, and by subdivision, it was created as a smaller lot, as were many of the neighboring lots on Gateshead Drive. And so, that's why you'll kind of notice that it's pre-existing and non-conforming in lot area, lot width, some of the setbacks, et cetera. What a lot of the cluster subdivisions don't account for is impervious coverage, actually, and often in that spreadsheet that's included in the master plan, just as a reference document, and this only comes up every so often, but there is also maybe the FAR or the setbacks that it was approved with. So, you can have a better understanding of what was quote-unquote grandfathered in. And the Bridgewater Township ordinance, zoning ordinance, was actually updated, I think, maybe 10 years ago or so, to account for this, because as properties that received the benefit of a cluster subdivision had, came back for an addition or something, there needed to be a note in the ordinance that it was actually protected and grandfathered in some case. Just, so this is just to provide some background. It appears that the lot, regardless of the allowance for the minimum lot area, and what the ordinance basically says is, you get to assume that this lot has enough land, has 50,000 square feet, is a conforming lot, and then base the coverage off of that. So, when you look at this lot at the 18% and assume it's a 50,000 square foot lot, it's still over by approximately 875 square feet existing. And if it was, if you look at it, not in the zoning table that was printed on sheet four of the memo, but you look at it, if it was a fully conforming lot area, it would be about 1,191 square feet over. So, not exactly the approximately like 2,400 that's shown right there in the table. So, that's just for the board's benefit to better understand how our ordinance treats these. It's kind of an unusual case, but it does provide a little bit of background to understand why it has so many pre-existing non-conformities. So, with that being said, it's still in a pre-existing non-conforming condition for impervious coverage, and obviously, the applicant has noted that that was pre-existing when he bought it. The historical imagery does show that it probably was conforming as far back as 2002 or so, so the driveway was in a, was less paved, it was smaller in 2002, and approximately around maybe as early as 2007, the imagery's clear enough to show that it was extended back. So, probably for the last 12 to 15 years, it's probably existed in this, in this area. And so, again, that's just to provide some background. I do think that the applicant has provided testimony related to a lot of the items in our memo. Well, I would ask, and just repeat, just to confirm, that there are no trees that will be removed as part of this improvement?
Yeah, there are no trees that will be removed. In fact, I just planted 12 new ones preemptively, and they're pretty nice size, and they're skip, 10 skip laurels and two arborvitae. So, there won't be no trees removed. It's a very clear access point to.
You picked a good night to bring that up here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll have that on the slides.
That's, that's good, no, thank you. And then, I just had noted in the joint review that there are some cleanup items in the zone table that would need to be cleaned up on the plan, so obviously, as any condition of any approval this evening, I would ask that those be cleaned up on any plans submitted for compliance. And I don't think I have anything additional.
Well, what about the rear yard, front yard issue? Is that a front yard coming, I know it's a paper right-of-way, right?
So, I brought that up, and I just kind of glossed it over as I was looking through that. So, in the, that's what kind of triggered my research into understanding where this was, which was what got me to the cluster subdivision. I pulled the subdivision map from 1995. Interestingly enough, below this, or just to the east, southeast of it, is what was approved as Bound Brook Manor. And so, on the subdivision map, it shows all those rightaways. On the township tax maps, they still appear. That property, I believe, is now open space and the, what's the name of the road down there?
Western?
No, 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 the one, beyond that, Running, Running Brook?
Oh, Running.
Running Brook. There are cul-de-sacs off of Running Brook. I tried my best to find, to trail down and track down the Bound Brook Manor subdivision map, couldn't find it. So, I don't know what happened with that. I don't know why they still appear as paper streets on the tax map. It does appear to be open space. I just couldn't find anything further about it. But I, I still don't know if there's an answer about the front yard, the two front yard setbacks, but I'm going to assume that that should be a non-issue, if it's open space.
Even if it were a front yard, it would be satisfied. It's just a matter of, if you're saying clean up the zoning table, is it going to be reflected as a?
Yeah, no, I, and I should have made that clear, yeah. I think the zone table issues that, or the things that were brought up were related more to, there's no floor error ratio requirement that was included, and while it's not being changed, I think it would be good to have it on the zone table, and then it's similar the building height to show that it's in conformance with the building height. And then, there was one other thing about the zone table indicating a pre-existing non-conforming condition for the single-side yard setback, but that actually is in conformance. So, just to remove the note that it says it's pre-existing non-conforming. Those are the cleanups. As far as the next section about the tax map and the front yard, if they had an answer to that, if there's something more clear-cut, I'd say, you know, or it showed that it was a front yard, or that the paper street was still active, then I'd say that we do something with it, but with no clear evidence, then we just, you know, kind of ignore that, I think. Thank you.
I just have a few quick follow-up questions. So, Mr. Nello, the lighting, exterior lighting, is there anything that you're aware of, or maybe this is from Mr. Wagar? Any exterior lighting proposed as part of the pool?
Other than maybe the low voltage, like, landscape lighting, like.
Little, the little landscape lights around the patio?
Little ones that are like low in the ground that, for little shrubs and things?
No spotlights of any kind on the back of the house or anything?
No, 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 no.
Okay. There's a steep slope plan proposed on, on the variance plan, steep slope analysis.
Yes.
I just want to confirm, there's no slopes greater than 30% that are proposed to be disturbed with this application, right?
Not within the limited disturbance. As I see it, it would appear that the entirety of the limited disturbance, which is less than 5,000 square feet, is within the 0% to 10% range.
Okay. And then, we heard testimony from the homeowner that, I think you said 12 new plants were just recently?
They're like shrubs, trees, or, yes.
Are they in the front yard, backyard?
They're in the backyard, they're where, next to where like the pool would go, it's like along the fence line.
Did you do that for privacy, or?
A little of both, just for, to beautify it a little bit, a little privacy, a little just fence, kind of just in the background.
And I want to ask a question about the drainage, going back to where the runoff, the water runoff currently flows. From the home, I think I heard testimony that collected in the gutters and then discharged to grade, to the ground? Can you just describe for the board where, I mean, do these go underground to the far rear area into the wooded area? Is that what I heard, or?
Yeah, so, so two things. So, there's really three sides of this. So, the front yard, I have the downspout, you know, the gutters, and then the downspouts, they go down the side of the house into the ground, they're piped out, right, and then picked up in the street by the storm sewer. That's all for the front of the home. On the side, like where the garage is and the driveway and all that, I have a little driveway drain that's piped under and goes toward the front. And then, in the back, which is probably where you're most interested, because that's where the project is, the downspouts on the back of the house, they go down, they go about midway into the backyard, and they go into this, what do you call it? It's like a bub, like a pop-up drain. So, it like tries to distribute it wide and even, I guess, when you have a heavy rain.
Into the lawn area?
Into the lawn area, yeah. So, it's like about midway into the, to the backyard.
Okay.
And then, you'll get, you'll also get runoff coming down from up gradient, you know, homes as the water travels down the hill and passes through the backyard and goes all the way down until it gets to like the cul-de-sac.
And do you anticipate those current drains or pop-up drains being disturbed by the pool construction?
Ah.
Or will they be relocated?
I think I'm short of where the pool will go, but I do think we'll probably redirect them a little bit further into the back to prevent, you know, any down gradient runoff.
Okay.
That would be my understanding. So, I think when they get there to do the pool and start digging it out, they'll probably redirect it a little further out, is my guess.
And just, just one follow-up question for your engineer. So, the testimony I heard was the landscape package that's proposed around the pool, is any of the runoff from the new impervious area, the pool patio, is that all going to be directed to some type of new landscape area? Is that what the plan is?
As I see it, the swath of, I'm going to flip back over to exhibit A1. Exhibit A1 has a large swath of landscaping area in between the patio, the proposed pool patio and the residence. So, with the back pitch of the patio, I would estimate about two-thirds of this would make its way into the heavily landscaped area. Heading to plan left, which I believe is north-northeast, it's a bit of bio swell, and then it would drain into the extended landscaping beyond the pool itself. Of course, we'll probably have about a quarter to a third of the patio area, which is very shallow pitched, would pitch into this lawn area. Which, and the lawn area to the south side of the pool definitely makes its way to the back-left corner into that heavily wooded area.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. Sure, Mrs. Min.
You know, I have a question regarding the filter, and is that open to the environment, or is it enclosed, the water filter, filter, that's the filter equipment?
The filter equipment.
Is it just open to something, or is it going to be like enclosed in?
The mechanical pool equipment pad, which we discussed a little while ago, is proposed to be located adjacent to an existing generator and two AC units on the northeast side of the residence, which is more of like the outdoor utilities pad area. The pool filter itself, the pool equipment, the whole apparatus is on a small pad, which is generally smaller than this table itself, and it's surrounded by, as per the proposed landscaping plan, by quite a few landscape plantings, not only for screening, but, you know, for any potential runoff.
The way I read it, it says filter and heater, water heater, right? So, is the water heater going to be electric heater or gas heater, or how does that work?
It would be gas.
Gas heater.
Yes, because we are currently on gas.
Yeah.
Energy supply.
You know, the reason why I'm asking all these questions is like, personally, I had a very big swimming pool, and we had a shed for all these things.
We're not, we're not going to have a shed or anything.
Protect the equipment, you know, the equipment gets rusted and all that.
Yeah, but you can't, we wouldn't be putting any of that inside of a covered, you know, enclosed unit. It's not safe for fire hazards and stuff like that. So, it would be open, and we'd put, you know, we'd put the shrubbery around it to make it pretty, so it's not an eyesore to our neighbors or anything. And I'd already put a bunch of those trees I had talked about, are already along those lines to protect their visual.
More for protection of the equipment rather than?
Yeah, it's, the equipment's outside, you know, it's just, it's going to be exposed to the weather. That's traditionally how that is.
Questions on engineering testimony. All right, see none? Back to you.
Mr. Landes, Chairman.
All right.
You're a real landscaper, and you can explain what.
Ask the board, any landscaping questions? I see none. So, why don't you just wrap up and basically, what's your ask of the board here? What do we need?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to wave a heart out to you, to consult on your rear yard and eight or whatever, for the intent of, for the, for the, for increase in progress. And for some of the, the.
A lot of thought.
Can you do the microphone, please?
How can we minimize, how can we minimize the, the net increase of impervious? And, you know, they're, they changed the design, they're removing parts of the driveway. Again, a lot of thought was put into it. Could this be made completely conforming? No, probably not. But the thought, the thought being that, again, he wants a nice, beautiful project. We are asking for a little bit of relief to provide a really nice project. If we tried to reduce it too much, again, he's already moving his basketball court, and it might impact the, like, the quality of the improvement. So, again, we're asking the board to indulge, you know, the situation involving a somewhat undersized lot. Everything else is, he's not increasing any other, he's not creating any new variances other than impervious. And again, the effort, it's 316 additional square feet, and based on the amount of landscaping that's being proposed, they're really, it should mitigate every drop of additional water being generated, and it's really not impacting any of the neighboring properties adversely. So, we are asking for the board's, you know, for indulgence to grant a slight variance to provide a really nice project for Mr. Wagar and his.
All right. Before I open up to members of the public, are you arguing for? Before I open up to members of the public, are you arguing for the flexible C, or is this hardship case? What is, what is your interpretation of the land use law?
It's hardship because of the undersized situation of the lot, as Mr. Armand explained. It really is a C1, because, again, is there a public benefit to having a private swimming pool? Probably not. But the hardship created by the size of the property, we just couldn't get past it.
But a pool does take in water, it does accept water, and it is, so there is some benefit to the residence theoretically, correct?
It does, yes. Mathematically, we're not allowed to include that. We're not allowed to consider the storage.
But operationally, it stores water.
It does, it does, absolutely does. But again, that's, that's just an extra factor safety to show that the additional runoff really should not have any impact on the neighbor. So, I believe it is a C1. Again, could there be a C2, a public benefit? Perhaps, but it's really a C1.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members of the public that would like to speak for or against this case, now is the time to come forward. All right, seeing none. Rich, why don't you take us through what we're voting on, and any stipulations?
So, as we heard, it's just the one variance for improved lot coverage. If the board were to vote in favor of this application, the couple of variance conditions, rather, that we spoke of would be to implement any other drainage mitigation measures, as might be recommended by the town engineer, if any. We did have some discussion about further reducing the driveway, which I'm not sure we came to a conclusion on, so that should be discussed a little bit, I think, by the board. And also to clean up the zone table in accordance with the comments from the professionals and the reports. How was it?
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, one other, no spotlights, but the use of low voltage lighting is agreeable, okay?
All right, very good. Jimmy, you want to kick us off for deliberations?
Yeah, actually, to find application, play the one for pool and stay here and grow the area. I have no problem with the application at all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kula, sir.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we have an opportunity here to improve what is a de minimis increase in impervious coverage. We're doing it to provide an enhancement to the overall property, somewhat to the neighborhood, but for the benefit of the family and their extended family. I don't want you to tear down the basketball hoop, I don't want, if you are reducing some of the driveway, as you had originally stated, I'm sure that's adequate, and given the, what I think is a very modest ask and improved impervious coverage, I would support the application as it was presented.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Seacat.
Hi. I have no concerns with this application. I appreciate that you were doing everything you can to, you know, reduce the impervious coverage, so I think that's great and very thoughtful of you. I would support the application.
Your thoughts on the basketball court net?
Fine.
Fine, all right. Thank you. Mr. Gajasky.
Yeah, I appreciate the applicant taking the time to do what you did. I don't, I mean, for the purposes of the impervious coverage, as it applies to the zoning and the things that we are here to do, it's not, they're not, that it applies, we're not protecting the woods, they need water in this particular situation. So thank you for taking it seriously and doing what you did, and please don't remove more than you need to.
Thank you. Bonjourne.
I think it's a modest ask, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
He's down there, he got it.
Yeah, I agree with the comments so far. It's a very modest ask, and, yeah, as you mentioned at the beginning, you're trying to do everything by the book, which I appreciate, so I'm in favor.
Mr. Fresco, good evening.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I don't think you need to remove any, anything further. Yeah, it's, it's great, you're gonna have fun, good luck with it, hopefully you get it in by summer.
All right, Mrs. Amin.
Yeah, it's a nice application, and there's only, only one little thing that they need approval for. I'm in favor of approving it.
I'm also in favor. Unfortunately, Mr. Wagar, small cases get kind of, you're certain to big cases and municipal land use law. You know, this is a modest ask. Unfortunately, you have to post escrow and retain professionals, because the little cases fall in the same domain as big cases. I'm sorry you had to go through this. Please do not take down your basketball court for this, please. Enjoy your pool, have a wonderful summer next year, and good luck with your project. All right, we're gonna vote on it, real quick, just for formality. Nancy, we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion?
Oh, I didn't, we need a motion.
Second.
Mr. Gajasky was second, and Mr. Waddely.
Sorry, Ms. Bush.
I'm first.
Jim.
Mr. Gabbit, I'm sorry, Chairman Foose.
Ah, yes.
Mr. Waddely.
Yes.
Mrs. Amin.
Yes.
Mr. Fresco.
Yes.
Mr. Bonjourne.
Yes.
Mr. Gajasky.
Yes.
All right, now I can say, good luck.
Thank you. You're all, you're all invited to the grand opening.
That's what we don't want here. All right, good night, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have 797 Country Club Road. Mr. Silbert, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Evening, members of the board, board professionals, and members of the public. My name is Michael Silbert, and I'm an attorney with the law firm D Francesco Bateman, based out of Warren Township, New Jersey. This evening, I have the privilege of representing the applicant, Raven Estates LLC, in connection with its application for preliminary and final major subdivision approval, together with associated C and D variance relief. This application concerns property located at block 437, Lot 4, on the township's tax maps, or commonly known as 797 Country Club Road. Property lies within the township's R40 zone. The tract consists of approximately 79,300 square feet, which is nearly double the minimum lot size required in the district, and is presently improved with one single-family dwelling that fronts on Country Club Road along the eastern portion of the site. The property has dual frontage, both along Country Club Road and the unimproved portion of Eisenhower, of the Eisenhower Avenue right-of-way. The application before the board is fairly straightforward. The applicant proposes to subdivide this property into two new lots. Proposed Lot 4.01, which will retain the existing single-family dwelling, fronting on Country Club Road, and proposed Lot 4.02, which will front on Eisenhower Avenue, and at some point in the future accommodate a new single-family dwelling. So, the existing dwelling will remain fronting on Country Club Road and have access through Country Club Road, and the newly created lot will have its frontage, or 4.02 will have frontage and access from Eisenhower Avenue. So, we've carefully, carefully designed this subdivision so that the proposed Lot 4.02, the lot where a new dwelling will one day be built, is a fully conforming lot. So by contrast, proposed Lot 4.01, the lot containing the existing home, will require lot area variance relief. Again, this lot contains approximately this 39,300 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required. So you're looking at a deficiency of just about 700 square feet, and we made this choice intentionally, reason being that the board knows precisely what exists on proposed Lot 4.01, an established home that's been part of the neighborhood for many years, and we felt that the board could use the existing conditions to better assess whether or not the negative criteria can be satisfied. And by contrast, the board can feel rest assured that the new home to be constructed on Lot 4.02, whenever that may be, will fully conform to all of the township zoning requirements and bulk standards, and we're perfectly comfortable, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Oller, making that a stipulation of approval this evening. So, I just want to emphasize that we're, we're really not necessarily seeking approval for a home that's, that hasn't been designed, rather, we're really asking the board to approve a fully conforming lot, which, when developed, will meet all of the zoning standards, and any future home will be subject to the township standard plot plan review to ensure full compliance with zoning, engineering, and stormwater management requirements at the time of submission and construction. In addition to the lot area variance, this application also, under a very technical interpretation of the municipal land use law, requires D variance relief pursuant to Section 70D5, which relates to density. That section applies when an application results in an increase in the permitted density, except in cases where the application involves detached one or two family dwellings on an isolated undersized lot, or on a lot created by a minor subdivision. So in this case, the application does involve single-family dwellings, but because of the proposed extension of Eisenhower Avenue, it, which is technically, it technically exists, but it's in paper street form, the subdivision is technically classified as a major subdivision and not a minor, so that as a result, this triggers D5 density relief. But again, to be clear, as the board's well aware, the R40 zone does permit single-family dwellings, and based upon the tract's total area, 1.98 dwellings are permitted, and the applicant is proposing two dwellings. Strictly speaking, the D variance is triggered for a deviation of only 0.02 dwellings. As the board may recall from reviewing the applications, the application materials, this actually is not the first time a subdivision application has been made for this property. So back in 2007, a very similar application was submitted, and jurisdiction was similarly conferred upon this very board. The board granted preliminary approval with variance relief for the same variances being sought this evening, and at that, and the subdivision, however, was never perfected. So we've had a significant lapse in time. I will certainly leave the formal planning testimony to the applicant's expert witness, but I just wanted to briefly point out that in 2007, this board found that the variance relief could be justified under the hardship criteria, and here's why. The township required the dedication of about 700 square feet along Country Club Road frontage for the widening of said road, and that small dedication, and really just that alone reduced the overall tract size just enough to trigger the lot area and density variances before you tonight. So if not for that municipal taking, this application would actually be fully conforming in every respect. I would also like to remind the board that this board, back in 2007, made a very clear finding, and I'm just gonna quote it directly, "Given the de minimis nature of the deficiency, the board finds it unreasonable to put the applicant through the exercise of attempting to acquire additional property or offer their property for sale to adjoining owners." So the applicant submits that this same principle applies equally here today. The, really, the only key distinction between what was previously approved in 2007 and what we're applying for today is the proposed extension of Eisenhower Avenue. So, the 2007 plan showed the extension coming from the northwest, from Roosevelt Street, and in this version, in this application, the extension is actually proposed from the southwest. So this change came about, it was, it was actually in response to some of the professional and neighborhood feedback we received. There were some concerns coming in from Roosevelt, so we listened, and we adjusted the plan accordingly to address those comments in good faith. Otherwise, you're looking at pretty much the same application that was already preliminarily approved and was merely never perfected. So, just before I call my first witness with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to note for the record that we did receive a number of professional reports. We received a joint professional review memo from Ms. Armand and Mr. Burr dated October 9th, 2025, a SOAR utility memo from Mr. Genova dated October 6th, 2025, and we received a no objections from traffic, your zoning officer, from health, from health, police, and fire. So no comments from any of those departments. There were a number of questions in the joint professional review memo regarding the conceptual dwelling and the bulk standards table, so if I could just briefly speak to that. The dwelling shown on this, on the subdivision plan on Lot 4.02 is purely conceptual. It was really included just to demonstrate how Eisenhower Avenue would logically extend and where it would terminate. So, the bulk standards table in the plan set indicates that the proposed dwelling max, the proposed dwelling on Lot 4.02, the conceptual dwelling, maxes out the bulk standards, but that's actually not accurate. The conceptual design does not maximize the bulk standards, and Mr. Stires can address that. But the numbers in the, in the bulk standards table should have used less than, or equal to, or greater than or equal to symbols, just to demonstrate that the eventual dwelling will fully comply with the bulk standards in the zone. And again, happy to stipulate to that this evening. Just, so that, that's really my introduction, Mr. Chairman, and with your permission, I do have two witnesses I'd like to call, the first being Mr. Craig Stires, who will present engineering testimony, and then we do have a professional planner, Mr. Matt Flynn. I would ask Mr. Oller if you could just confirm that notice for this application was, was proper and adequate, and that the board does have jurisdiction, in your opinion, to hear the application?
I did review the notice, it's in proper form, was published on time and served timely, so the board has jurisdiction.
Mr. Silbert, can you just confirm if the school board was notified? Because this is right against Eisenhower's property, Eisenhower School. They weren't noticed?
I, I'm going to, I, I remember noticing them, but I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I'm gonna take.
If you could just double check, because I had a board member actually call me today and say, do we have something that we need to look into? And I said, I'm sure you were noticed.
I mean, make 100% sure that my representation.
Put that on the record, so I am not a liar.
They were the first property on my list.
What are they named as?
They were, they are named as Bridgewater, Raritan Board of Education.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Notice is good?
Notice is good.
All right. Thank you.
Let's weigh everybody in.
I have a question first, before we get started, before you call your witnesses. You said in your opening comments that you're not asking us to approve a conceptual dwelling. I'm not sure I'm following you here. It seems to me like the application, it's pretty clear as to what you want in terms of creating two separate lots, that part is clear. And then to propose a dwelling that's not really the dwelling we're going to be seeing means that who are you going to come back to for approval of that dwelling? And you kind of went through it awfully quickly, so I'd like you to slow it down so that I can understand it.
Yes, okay. So the way that this subdivision is designed, and the way the one in 2007 was designed, is that the, the lot that requires the lot area variance is the lot with the existing dwelling, and we're not proposing any changes to the existing dwelling. So with respect to the conceptual dwelling shown on the fully conforming lot, what I was, what I was trying to suggest is that we're not sure exactly what home is going to be built there. We showed a conceptual dwelling for the board so they could see, you know, what a, what a home could look like there, the location, how it would interact with the extension of Eisenhower Avenue. But what I was stipulating to the board is that we can ensure that when a home is eventually developed, it could be 10 years from now, that it'll fully, it will fully conform with the R40 zoning requirements, so there's, there would be no setback variance, no FAR variance, no lot coverage variance. I'm, I'm indicating that we want to build something that fully conforms.
And I'm just, Rich, from a legal perspective, this does not make this a bifurcated application, that he's asking for two separate?
It's not really bifurcated, because they're not asking for any variance. What he's saying is when they go for a building permit, there will be no variances associated with the, with obtaining a building permit for whatever house they want to build, the house will conform on this fully conforming lot.
Okay.
And just to add to that.
You don't have to, but it's okay.
Well, I was just gonna say that we, we still, when we go for a building permit, it still has to comply with the stormwater management requirements, so I, we didn't put that on, we didn't submit a stormwater management report, for example, because we don't know, I, I mean, Mr. Stires will testify to it, but we think it'll be a minor anyway, but we didn't address it, because I don't know what house is going to be constructed there.
Right. The, the second thing that you discussed in your opening remarks was the paper street and the extension of that street. So we will have testimony to validate that, that, that none of that paper street has been vacated and distributed among the property owners up to this point. And I thought I read somewhere in your documents about who would be responsible for the construction of that street, and that I assume would be your client.
Correct.
And I was curious to know, and maybe we'll find out in testimony, as to whether a private developer, in this case, whoever creates that subdivision, would have to build the street before the house, and can they build the street to the same standards as the, as the municipal entity, in this case, Bridgewater would build if it so chose to build that street? And then do you have any further obligation with respect to that street to either create a turnaround or perhaps extend it to its natural conclusion, or does that belong, that responsibility belong to somebody else? So you don't have to answer those now, but I think we will have to address them at some point, and Rich, you tell me if I'm off base here, so.
No, not at all, and generally, and Bill, tell me if, if it's different here, but the road would need to be constructed prior to the filing of the subdivision map, right? We're using a Mylar here for the final?
Correct, we have.
So, you know, so before, it's a major, so, yeah. So, prior to that map being signed and recorded, the road would either have to be fully constructed or fully bonded.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing I did want to point out is that over time, Eisenhower has been improved, so it's almost like as a home is built, it's extended and so on, and. So it's almost like as a home is built, it's extended and so on. And so I just wanted to clarify that it's, it's a paper street as it exists directly in front of the house, but it is improved prior to the house to the south. Just wanted to clarify that. So it's, and we've also, I'm just going to say this to the board, we've received feedback from the neighborhood that they really do not want to see Eisenhower Avenue extended all the way to Roosevelt. And that was really the whole purpose for us shifting the extension, was to address the neighbor's concern. And so I'm just, for, for the board's edification, I am letting you know that that's, that's the feedback we received. But I hope to address your comments with our, with our testimony very shortly.
Thank you.
My question is that, let's say this subdivision is approved, and the owner is Raven Estates. Will they be the ones who will build another house, or will they sell the lot to someone else?
So here's how I'll answer that question. So as, as Mr. Oller just pointed out, Raven would have to either sell the entire tract or he would have to do the road improvements himself. My client's represented to me that he does intend to construct the dwelling on the, on the vacant lot, or what would be the vacant lot. But ultimately, I, I don't know, because that's certainly my client's representation to me that he intends to do it. But I, I'm not certain if a year and a half from now that there, you know, something could change, but that's his intention, is to build the home on that lot and not, and not sell it beforehand.
If they're going to sell the lot to someone, it's easier to sell 40,000 square feet because the new owner will say, "Okay, it's, it complies with the requirements." If it is smaller, then--
Well, in addition to that, obviously, if we sold a 39,300 square foot lot that was vacant, that person would be right back before this board, so.
Is your developer the one that did the two houses to the south that already extended Eisenhower?
No, right? You didn't do the houses to the south, right?
Okay.
But the developer and the owner is, is here.
Just curious. All right. Thank you.
I have a question. So just so I understand, the current home on the existing lot as it is right now is fully conforming?
Um, yes, it is fully conforming. However, when the subdivision takes place, then it will be on an undersized lot, but it will conform with everything else, with the exception of the fact that 4.01 would be undersized by 700 square.
So, so that's what I wanted to clarify. So basically, if we vote on this to approve it, if it gets approved, we're voting to, we're voting to create a non-conforming lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good. You're good. Good. So--
Let's go first witness, yeah?
Okay, great. Thank you. Do you want to swear?
Yeah, I kind of prefer doing them as they come up, frankly.
No worries.
Right? Could you raise your right hand, please? So you saw me swear that the testimony you give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your name for the record, please?
Craig Stires. S-T-I-R, yes.
And Mr. Stires, you've testified before this board, and you've been accepted as a expert in the field of engineering?
Yes.
License is in good standing?
Yes.
All right. The board has no objections. Good to see you again, Mr. Stires. Good evening.
Mr. Stires, you oversaw and prepared the subdivision plan before the board this evening. You're quite familiar with it, correct?
Yes.
Can you walk the board through the proposal?
Sure. Actually, Mike did a pretty good job of stealing my, most of my testimony, but I will reiterate. Again, the lot is known as 797 Country Club Road, Lot 437, Lot 4, and is on the westerly side of Country Club Road, just south of Roosevelt Street. The property actually, in the early 70s, was an 80,000 square foot lot. As Mike mentioned, in approximately 1977, the town came through and did a taking of approximately 4.375 feet along Country Club Road for virtually, you know, probably a dozen or more lots. And then, which ultimately created the lot size that we have today with the 79,300. Additionally, as Mike said, the property was subdivided in, plans are dated 2006, I guess finalized in 2007. As far as the subdivision is concerned, it's identical to that application. And when we first submitted the application this year, everything was identical. We did go to Roosevelt Street, same as the previous application. And, you know, we did get the feedback to switch that to the south. For one, another reason is that there was a major subdivision to the south that created two new lots, which also extended Eisenhower Avenue up to the, the lot basically adjacent to us to the south. So there was a full roadway constructed by the developer, curb on our side, no curb on the school side, sidewalk on our side. The sanitary sewer was extended. There were utilities, or are utilities, already in Eisenhower Avenue that go all the way through to Roosevelt Street, including water and gas. So what we did was we flipped our access point to extend from the south to our site. So it's kind of like a mirror image of what the previous application was. So you had not only the previous application or approval for this particular lot, but then you had also the subdivision to the south, kind of what generated what we have before us tonight.
Craig, do you know if the subdivision that was approved to the south had the same type of deviations? And if you don't know, that's okay. But do you know if there was a lot area issue with that one?
Uh, no, they look like they were both conforming. There actually was a lot line adjustment to a lot further to the south, so--
Okay.
You know, just that arrangement. So that, that lot furthest to the south may have had, been an undersized lot with the adjustment. But as far as the questions of, you know, the developer building the lot within the right-of-way, same exact situation would be this situation as well. So I, hopefully that answers your question.
Um, yeah, I just will, will say that the 2007 appro, well, first of all, there, would you say that there's a turnaround where a cul-de-sac proposed in connection with the extension?
So what happened with our particular subdivision in 2007, there, if you, and we also kind of put it back on the plans, there's an access easement around the driveway. So the driveway is oversized so that a fire truck could come into the driveway and be able to turn around. So the original application for this particular lot had that situation, and the subdivision to the south has the exact same situation. The, the lot, the driveway coming in, it has like a 50-foot depressed curb, so what happens is the truck can pull into the driveway, back out, and be able to turn around. And we are replicating that situation on our particular application.
So you, you saw from the 2007 application that there was an exception granted by the board for RSIS compliance as a de minimis exception with respect to a cul-de-sac? And you're, are you saying that there, there's a, there is a safe means for a fire truck to turn around in what you're proposing?
Yes, I mean, I did look up the RSIS tonight with that particular instance. It's very vague as far as the requirement per se, but the, I believe it's the, the fire code for New Jersey does require a access point and a turnaround similar to what we are providing. So if we needed the exception to, because sometimes there's vagueness in the RSIS, believe it or not, to request that, just to be on the safe side--
Yeah.
But I believe we comply.
So to the extent that it's necessary, we're asking the board to grant an exception to the cul-de-sac requirements in RSIS. Mr. Stires, your testimony is you don't necessarily believe that's necessary, but to the extent it is?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just going to go through some of the comments in the professional review memo. So there's a shed that's on the property. Can you just talk about what's, what's going to happen to that shed?
Yeah, I visited the site again today, and it's, it's almost too dilapidated to stand up by itself, so that, that'll be coming down, should the application be approved.
Great. And I had made representations about the bulk standards and it being maxed out. Can you just speak to that for a moment with respect to the conceptual dwelling?
Sure. What I tried to relay as far as the requirements on the zoning table is that it had, it will meet the standards. So that's the reason I showed the, the full allotment of the 50, the setbacks, the lot coverage, and the FAR. As far as the plan, what we have on the plan right now, that is, as far as the impervious coverage, is 10.9%. The FAR for that house that is conceptually shown is less than .1. So there is a substantial amount left to be developed if they wanted to. But again, we wanted to show, one, the access point and how it would be done, and then if a house that would be reasonable in size, similar to what the houses are next door, this is what it would look like.
Thank you. And I'm just going to go through the, the list here. So there are encumbrances on the property, but in, is that true? There are, there are easements, right?
Uh, there's an easement along Country Club Road. We are proposing easements on our side as far as, we are, again, get granting, would be granting a sidewalk easement along the frontage, along the Eisenhower side, and then also that access easement to allow for the--
Right.
--fire truck access.
But as far as other encumbrances, like wetlands, flood hazard areas, slopes, there, there are no encumbrances that would impact the building envelope of the proposed lot 4.02, right?
Now, that, we, we did have Ed Cook from Eastern State's Environmental visit the site, evaluate the site as far as potential wetlands. We supplied the letter as part of our application that he said that it did not meet the criteria for any wetlands on the property.
Yeah, and that, and that was, that report was included in our submission. Regarding street trees, what, there's a comment in there saying that it, that will provide street trees in accordance with subsection, or 191.8, subsection 13, A through E. Speak to the street trees, because we're, on the, the applicant for a dwelling on 4.02 will have to comply with the street trees ordinance and landscaping ordinance?
Well, we did show four street trees on the Eisenhower side, and what the applicant did on the south side of the subdivision to the south, rather than putting them on their lot, they put them on the school side. So we decided to, to mirror that, so what you have is somewhat of a buffering along the school property, which I think is a very good idea. So we continued what they started to the south, and we have four trees on that side of the property, rather than on the, the house side of the property.
Obviously, we'll stipulate to complying with all bonding, bonding requirements set forth in the MLUL under Section 53. That was a comment.
How do you go about getting the school district to approve that?
Well, you're saying it would be in the right-of-way?
Yeah.
So it would be in the right-of-way, but they still, they may have an objection to this, the type of trees they, how do we make sure they're okay with this? Because I don't want to--
Well, again, they'll be in the right-of-way.
What's that?
It would be in the right-of-way.
It would be in the right-of-way, so they, they would have no say, so you could plant something they theoretically don't want?
Well, like you said, you want trees in this township.
I, I, that's what I'm getting at. Like, I really, I'm trying to think of a buffer that we can create. I liked how the development to the south does have trees. I'd like to continue that up. I just want to make sure that we're in compliance, whatever Bridgewater, Raritan School District is doing.
Well, again, we're, we're really doing--
Can we match--
Of course, with the township.
How about we match the type of trees that are--
I think we have, yeah. I think we did, anyway.
And we could stipulate to that, too.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Absolutely. So we don't have any architecturals. Can you speak to just a moment as to what you anticipate? What's likely to be constructed on this property? Because we've already represented that it's going to conform, so.
Um, I, I mean, again, I can't speak to the architect, I would, I would think it would be consistent with the two to the south, actually, four to the south, because you actually have two that face Country Club and two that face Eisenhower. And those four houses are very similar to each other as far as architecture, so honestly, it would, I would think it'd be something similar.
And as far as whether, and there, again, there's no chosen footprint yet, and we don't know the level of disturbance, but do you have any idea if this is going to be a major or minor development from a stormwater management perspective?
Um, the extension of the road and the improvements that we have shown are less than 10,000 square feet. So it's, doesn't increase it by a quarter acre. And the disturbance, which I think is pretty, you know, the grading and, it's not that we just showed a house, we showed the grading and everything, that was 28,000 square feet, so that's less than an acre. So the entire project would be a minor project as far as stormwater is concerned.
Okay.
Craig, how, how does the slope happen here from the property to five, to Lot 01, to 501? Is it north to south?
It drains.
You're talking about the property in the north?
I, I'm more in question, obviously, all the properties are important, but 437, 5.01 property, if you're facing, the house is already built to the left, so to the south. Yes?
Can I, you can mark this?
Yeah, let's, let's--
Yeah, why don't we mark that A1, please? And then just before you answer that question, just describe A1 for the record.
Um, it is a great, it's entitled Grading Utility Soil Erosion Control Plan Rendering, and it is basically the grading plan with an aerial underneath it. So you can see the improvements over what is essentially out there now. So your question, the drainage goes from--
Yeah, your water flow.
Yeah. All these lots drain from Country Club to Eisenhower.
Okay, so east to west.
These guys all go this way. Our lot, our lot drains to the back. It is somewhat flat in the back, but again, we're kind of pushing it around the house, but it, it still maintains that flow path of the existing condition.
You think there's minimal impact to Lot 01, 5.01, to the south?
That would be this one?
No. The one at Country Club.
Bottom right.
Yep.
No impact at all.
Okay.
This is, this would be uphill.
Thank you.
So this, this house would impact this house. Our existing house may impact ours, but, but no.
All right. So, and the house that is on Eisenhower is a newer developed property that would meet higher threshold of--
This one?
--flow standards, yes.
This one is draining kind of southwest.
And that's a new development? That's a new project?
Yes.
Got it.
The, the high point, if Eisenhower Avenue were to be constructed, the high point would be right here. So this drains this way, this drains this way.
Okay.
To the north and to the south.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Craig, how about, do you think that the proposal will impact, let's just assume, for argument's sake, that proposed Lot 4.02 is built out to the maximum permitted lot coverage, for example? Do you have concerns that that would negatively impact Lot 1 to the north on Roosevelt?
Um, no, because, one, we've put a swell here. So I think, actually, we don't have the, too much, too many contours on this, but I believe this slopes up a little bit, so essentially, there would be a swell along the property line that would continue to the west.
Okay. So, so your, so your testimony is that even if it was built to the, to the maximum permitted under the ordinance, you don't have any concerns that there would be runoff or drainage directed towards a Lot 1 to the north?
No.
Okay.
Does the, the proposal for the extension of the road, does that include some form of storm drain, drainage, some way to move water from, remove water from the road in a way that it doesn't impact any of the adjacent properties?
Um, this is the extension right here, and this would be consistent to what is out there now, so there'd be a, a crown in the road. So this half would drain down probably to where it intersects with the driveway to Eisenhower School, and I believe there's an inlet there. The other half would just drain into the grassed area of the school.
So the road itself--
North and south, this lot would not impact those two, those lots.
Right. But as the construction of the road, as you would propose it, does not have then any additional drainage built into the road that you're constructing?
No.
Yeah.
All right. So as far as the conditions between this application and the 2007 one, all of the conditions that are applicable-- all of the conditions that are applicable to this application, we can comply with. Some of the conditions from the 2007 approval, it was the installation of sidewalks along Eisenhower Avenue, or to make a contribution to the township sidewalk fund, one or the other. And the amount of the contribution is to be determined by the township engineer. So we can comply with that. How about the sidewalks on Country Club Road? Have you seen the sidewalks? Did you feel that they were in decent condition, at least as it relates to proposed lot 4.01, the existing sidewalk?
Yes, I think it's in, in good condition. Overall, I mean, if there's something, there's a bad spot or, you know, one of the slabs, there's something wrong with it, we can repair it. But I think, overall, I think the sidewalk is in good condition.
To, we would stipulate, Mr. Oller, to repairing the sidewalk if necessary, if determined necessary by township engineer, board engineer, but only to the extent that there's, you know, it needs repair. We don't want to just replace it. But if there's some area that's identified that needs something, we'll certainly repair it. That was a comment in, I believe, Mr. Burr's portion of the memo. See, if there was any other things from the old resolution. Oh, the other resolution focused on water service. So Mr. Stires, current day, there's water to the property 4.02, proposed lot 4.02?
There is water all the way through Eisenhower Avenue. So we would just connect with the water service into the right of way.
I am bringing that up because that was a main focus of the conditions from 2007, where originally 4.02 was to be serviced by well. And that doesn't seem to be applicable. The other conditions that I felt that would be difficult to comply to were the conditions from the old professional reports. I felt that, you know, we could just stipulate to complying with the more up-to-date joint review memo. There was a developers' agreement that had to be executed, and we take no issue to that, since public improvements are required. And the other condition was the submission of a standard compliance report, which is still a condition today. So there shouldn't be any issues with complying with the 2007 conditions of approval.
Is that a Scarlett Doyle letter in 2007?
It is. Yeah, so I guess, Mr. Oller, to the extent applicable, we can comply with all of the conditions in the 2007 resolution. So can you talk about whether or not utilities would be underground for proposed lot 4.02? We don't show utilities, right?
Yes, we do.
Oh, you do? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, we have gas, water. We have the sewer coming out to Country Club. And I believe there is a pole in the corner, so we could come in underground.
Okay. So we can comply with that.
Before we jump off of utilities, so you have a sanitary sewer easement running through, you know, the existing lot, which will become 4.01, right?
Yes.
So just to be clear, that easement is only going to serve the new lot. It's really not an easement to the municipality, because the municipality is not going to take any ownership interest of that line until it crosses into the right of way.
Right, yes.
So, Michael, it'll just be a form easement that would be subject to our review, okay?
Perfect. There was a comment about the fence, a fence being located in that easement area. Do we, it's going to remain, I assume it's not impacting the easement area? Is that accurate?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we could probably stipulate, and when we write the easement agreement up, you know, if it, if it needs to be repaired.
Oh, yeah. If the comment was to whether the fence needs to be repaired, that, we can repair it. But I think the comment was more whether it would impact the easement area, but I don't, I don't imagine it would.
I would expect that we put the lateral in, and then you could put the fence back.
Okay. We'll certainly confirm the lot numbering.
Before you move off of that, Bill, is there any objection with a fence over the top of the easement? Okay.
Make sure the mic is on. Our ordinance does have some restrictions about placing fences in easements. There's a provision of the ordinance that actually, actually requires a fence agreement be approved by the township engineer. And it's basically the homeowner acknowledging that if any time in the future, the township, now I know we just established this isn't a township easement, but it does give us a right to go in and not restore it the way it was, if necessary. It doesn't really apply here, but as long as it's not blocking drainage in any kind, in this case, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. We've already touched upon the 34-foot by 50-foot access easement shown on the southwest corner of proposed lot 4.02. We will certainly confirm with a tax assessor prior to perfecting the subdivision, the lot numbering. We do-
I'm sorry, again, but before we move off that access easement, again, that 34 by 50, can you just, so on A1, all right, on your rendering, is it highlighted on there anyplace?
It is right here.
Okay. So is it intended to be paved?
Yes.
Okay. And since it's a turnaround for a fire truck, is there going to be no parking in that area?
If need be. I mean, the, the requirements I've seen, when I looked them up today as far as the fire code, this roadway is required to be a minimum of 20 feet. We have 28 feet, so it's oversized. It's, again, it's a similar condition that, which is out here. It's just really, this one is extended depressed curb. So, I mean, we can put up no parking signs, and we can even, you know, stripe this area if need be. I mean, it's kind of a dead space.
About the striping part? Yeah, I think striping could be, like, kind of ugly, you know, and it just, but maybe, Bill, what do you think, no parking signs on that area? Is that necessary?
I dare us to admit a repeat.
Okay, so it's a turnaround, we're talking about the 50 by 34 easement area?
Yes.
It's going to be paved, and the purpose of it is so a fire truck can turn around, right? And, because there's no cul-de-sac in the road, right? So no parking signs in that area?
It's not, it's not the most pleasant thing to look at, but I think it's probably something that should be considered.
Yeah.
Being that that speaks to the ability of a fire truck to get in and out. I think it's, I think it's reasonable to have a sign there.
I mean, we could really just put it right at the end, because that's the key part, is for them to back out here and pull out. So you can just put a single no parking at the end.
Well, and it's kind, it's kind of for the person who's in that house, right?
Yeah.
Because that's who I can see parking there.
Right.
Right? So-
If he parks there.
But there needs to be some enforcement of the no parking, right? Right?
Is, I thought that this was, would be a public road, though, right? Wouldn't, wouldn't enforcement be?
Well, the road is public.
Not the easement area.
The easement's not, yeah.
Right, right.
If it's a public road, so you build it, you give it to Bridgewater, and then we're stuck with it, to maintain it, to, in perpetuity, once you build it, you're done?
I understand, we bond for it, but, yes.
Okay. And so if the township then decided that they could establish a no parking area, then that would be something that we, as the zoning board, would do, or that the township would do?
So you're talking about two different things, right?
Yeah.
So the, the public road, yes, okay. But the easement area is not a public road.
That's part of the driveway.
Yeah, it's in, it's in lot 4.02.
Oh, I see your concern is more the easement than the road.
I'm more concerned about the easement area and someone parking there. Because if I'm the owner of 4.02, and I have multiple cars, and that's a nice paved area where I can just put a couple of cars all the time, it's on my property, right? So what's going to stop me from doing that and having the purpose of it kind of taken away? So there should be, maybe, you know, an easement that's going to impact, you know, be recorded against 4.02. And I think we could give the municipality the right to enforce no parking on that private lane, the same way you would in, say, a condominium master deed, right? That, and, because the municipality can have enforcement rights over certain areas there. So maybe, you know, Mike, we can work on the language, if you're okay with-
Absolutely.
-that condition, so that, you know, the municipality has authority to enforce no parking in that area, and it would be recorded, so that the lot owner would be aware?
That's totally fine.
Okay?
It's interesting, when I looked at this final plat, there was no easement, but there was one for this approval, so. I, I agree with you. I think it, to its benefits-
It's kind of different, because you get to the end of the road in that one. So, you know, if, if you're relying on that in lieu of a cul-de-sac, I think you need to protect it somehow.
I agree.
Now, Bill, in terms of cul-de-sac exemption, who's to say they need a stormwater grate? Yes or no? I mean, what if you come back on a review and say, you know what, we've looked at this, the 28 additional feet, we do need a stormwater grate installed here? I'm not prepared to have that exemption cover that stormwater.
Yeah, I, I know when the initial, well, Eisenhower, as Craig alluded to, was really built in two phases. The original one, that provides access to the school, and then maybe in 2000 or so, 2020, excuse me, the latest extension was constructed for the two new homes. I do know drainage was extended up to where it splits to continue to the school and where the new-
I didn't see any sewer grates on the extension.
Not on the new extension, at the beginning of the new extension.
That's why I'm concerned.
Beginning. So, you know, RSIS allows you to go up to 400 feet between inlets.
Okay.
We're probably pushing that limit.
Right. But I just don't want this exemption, this cul-de-sac exemption, to exempt you from potential stormwater grate installation. If you decide that there needs to be a stormwater installation, then by all means. So this exemption we're talking about here does not include stormwater.
No, fair enough.
Got it.
And if, whatever the board engineer recommends, if he feels it's necessary to add, we would agree to do that.
Everything's going to be under his review, and if he, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't really have anything further. We didn't, we didn't receive any comments back from the county yet. As we already stated, this is going to be perfected by map filing, because it's a major subdivision, so we really have no choice. The only other thing I could think of is the sewer utility comments. Craig, you reviewed it, and you didn't, we can comply with everything, right?
Yes.
No concerns, so. I think, Craig, I don't have anything further for you.
I think, I think one of the other conditions would be that it has to come in from the south. You know, the layout or the extension of the road, I mean, you can't switch it over. The approval has to be coming in from the south.
Was the previous approval, Roosevelt Street, approved?
Yes.
Okay, so this is going to supersede that?
Yes.
Is that possible?
Yes.
Even though the approval runs with the land?
Well, yeah, but here it expired, right? So they didn't perfect, sorry, they didn't perfect it.
Okay.
So I'll just make sure this resolution will just say that, that prior approval is now null, and this one is what they're proceeding with.
And you stipulate to that?
Yeah. I mean, I was thinking about how to prepare this application, honestly. If you, it wasn't classified as an amended or any way, but we certainly stipulate to that, absolutely.
MLUL doesn't talk about amended either, so.
I know.
Right. It's a new application.
Yeah.
It's, you know, we're just going to modify.
Well, I was, quite honestly, I wasn't sure if I should just go in for, for final, and I wasn't really, because the, the way the ordinance is, the variances have lapsed, the variances have expired. But technically, the preliminary subdivision, it's not protected against zone changes, but-
And there were no zone changes?
There were no zone changes. So I struggled with preparing this because of those reasons.
We'll deal with it as a new application and a waiver, if you will.
Yes.
From the applicant of its prior, okay?
But you spent a lot of time talking about accepting the conditions that had attached themselves to the previous approval. And if that approval is void, we're essentially asking for those same conditions as part of your new application. And, and if the board engineer and/or the planners had additional restrictions or things they're asking you to stipulate to, that's what we should be considering this evening as well. In other words, just because they did it, how many years ago? 18, 17, what was it?
It was 2007, so 18 years ago.
Yes. So just because they did it 18 years ago doesn't mean that, oh, yeah, that's a great idea, I should agree. But some of them are reasonable, and we might, and we might very well refer to the board in the past and say, yeah, that's okay. But we might have some new ones as well.
I'm all ears on, on new concerns that the board has. We're certainly open to new conditions if it's necessary. And to the extent, to the 2007 conditions, to the extent that they are applicable to this subdivision, we're happy to comply with them.
Right, okay.
And they'll all be separately enumerated in the new resolution?
Yes.
Any other board questions? All right. Before we get to board professionals, I want to open up to members of the public, because they have questions that I think may be helpful to your testimony. So, members of the public, questions? Yeah, please, just need your name and address, and any questions you have on the testimony of Mr. Stires.
Mr. Fuas, Chairman. My name is Roy Asher. I am the owner of Lot 1, in the same block, so the one up the north. Yeah, and I was here to see if I might be able to seek some consult with professionals, just to make sure, crossing Ts, dotting Is, with some of the observations I've seen in the past happen there. So at the time where they took the trees down and built the two properties to the south, we started seeing more water approaching my lot, which demanded some remediation in the area. And I had to put a little French drain at the time. John was there, the owner, nice old guy, so we resolved it real quick. And, you know, it's stable. I have no concerns at this, at this point with the way that we are established. Should there be anything happening there, I wanted to do my due diligence. And it is simchatora today. I am religious enough to have to go to shul, and I'm here. This is how important this is to me. And so I just want to make sure that we are indeed doing the due diligence, be it the town experts, professionals, protecting us here. If there is any water concerns, if you see anything there, please, oh, please, let's make sure that we're working together to establish some solutions here, so we don't have to deal with it in the future.
Is your house depicted on that exhibit that we referred to?
The one up north.
Did you point it out, please? So you're adjacent to that?
Correct.
And how is it that you're able to access your house along, are you accessing it?
I'm on Roosevelt Street, sir.
I'm sorry?
On Roosevelt Street.
On Roosevelt Street, okay. Gotcha. And so what you're concerned about, if I'm hearing you correctly, is there any impact on your home, which is adjacent to the proposed improvement or house that may be built? And that's what you're asking our board professionals to pay attention to, and see if there are any requirements that could be imposed on this developer that would protect you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So after you're done speaking, I would ask the board professionals to respond to that as well.
Thank you. I'm done.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Board professionals.
Drainage on this property is my biggest concern as well. I know that when the two new homes to the south were constructed, I didn't hear anything from, I don't recall hearing anything from this gentleman to the north, but I did hear from folks to the south on Steeplechase. And the developer of those two homes did do some additional drainage improvements on those lots, that I'm hopeful have addressed, or at least improved those conditions down on Steeplechase. So that, that's an issue that, that I'm certainly concerned with. Craig's plan, the way it's constructed right now, does not show any drainage improvements. But we heard through his testimony that they'd be willing to address any, any drainage requirements that we have. One concern that I do want to raise, and maybe it's a question for Craig, is, you know, when I take a look at the plan here, the extension of Eisenhower creates 4,200 square feet of new impervious coverage. And then you said the way it's drawn with the current house on your plan, in total, you're at 10,000 square feet, which I agree, if that's the way this is built, you're a minor development. The problem is, if somebody comes in here after the roads extend- if somebody comes in here after the roads extended and they build this instead to the max allowed at 18%, then that kicks you over a quarter percent and then actually, or a quarter acre, excuse me, and then actually you're a major development. So, I think there needs to be some more definition. It can't just be, you know, we're going to comply with the max 18% coverage. Because if somebody does build it to the max 18%, that makes this a major development. And then we have an issue that you guys got to go back to the drawing board and figure out how to manage that runoff. So, I think if the proposal is to build the extension and the board is okay with that, then I think there needs to be a restriction on the coverage cap that's going to be, going to be built to on Lot 402 to keep you under that major, major development threshold? If that makes sense? There, yeah, but you can't, you can't bifurcate those two issues. If you're being, if you're seeking an approval now and your road extension and the potential which your plan shows to max out the home on 402, even if they get built at a different time, you don't treat them separately. It's new coverage as of this date, that makes it a major. So, I don't think you can, I don't think you can say 18% is what, is the maximum we can build to. Yes, under conventional zoning it is, but because you're extending the road, you have to account for that as well.
Can I take one brief moment, I just want to ask-
Why don't we take a quick break? Or, you know, it's about time, it's 8:53, why don't we take, let's call it till 9 o'clock? All right, thank you. All right.
Ms. Amin?
Yeah.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes, here.
Mr. Bonjourne?
Here.
Mr. Gieske?
Here.
Mr. Seacat?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Gabbit?
Here.
And all our professionals are here. All right, Mr. Silber.
Thank you for granting us some time to do some quick math because we were trying to reflect Mr. Burr's concerns with respect to the 4,200 increase associated with the extension of Eisenhower Avenue. So, we did some quick math and what we determined is that if the lot coverage on 4.02 were to exceed 16.7%, that would constitute a major for stormwater management purposes. So, based upon that, we would agree to have in the resolution that if the development on Lot 4.02 exceeds 16.7%, the developer would have to comply with the major stormwater management regulations. If that is acceptable to the board and the board's professionals, that's something we're trying to do to recognize the increase in impervious coverage associated with.
All right, and just to put in language for members of the public that are here, you're essentially capping the improvement at 16.7%, which would be a smaller building footprint.
Right.
That hopefully negate any impacts to adjacent properties.
Correct, and if it were to, and again, only 18% is permitted. If it were to exceed 16.7, again, it can only go to 18%, then that would bring into play a whole different set of stormwater management regulations.
And hypothetically, if you wanted to go to 16.8%, Bill, would they have to come back to the board? Or they would just work this out with town and they would just opt into major stormwater development?
Well, I think if the board conditions it upon 16.7, if they want to go above that, not only do they have to comply with the stormwater regs, they also have to, they'd have to come back to the board.
Yeah, I agree. It would have to alter the condition in the resolution issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
That's perfect.
Okay.
For a house to hit, like, to remain under that 16.7, would that be comparable in size to the houses on either side, or would that be substantially smaller?
Well, just to clarify, we're talking about impervious coverage as well, right?
Yeah.
So, I'll let you answer that question, but technically you could build a really tiny house and have a lot of impervious coverage, but I think ultimately, yes.
True.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I think in the long run, you're probably going to see something similar to what we have because you can see it's similar in nature to the house to the south. And again, that's a pretty good-sized house that was built. So, I think that as far as the consistency, right now, like I said, that shown right there is 11%. So, if you put a pool back there or something like that, you still have room to put the pool, kind of like the professionals were saying in their review letters, there's still room to do those things and still not go over that threshold.
That's only initially.
Thank you.
When they build initially. So, if anybody, you know, someone buys a house and then they come back at some other point in time, and that goes over the 16 points, I mean, if you're going right up to the limit there, that's kind of.
Yeah, it's a good point in terms of how will they know.
Yeah.
So, you could deed restrict the lot.
You can put in a deed notice.
Yeah, we'll do a deed notice so that any buyer is on notice because it will come up in his title searches when they purchase the property.
What's the big difference of what has to be done if it's a major or minor?
It's a big deal.
I guess that's one concern is why we're.
And we have a resident here that's basically saying that they have issues with stormwater on their property.
We didn't talk about the specific differences, but if you can picture a large commercial development that we've seen, several of them lately, that increase the coverage by 10,000 square feet, a quarter acre, or disturb more than an acre, you're talking large and very expensive stormwater features needing to be constructed.
And that's the 2,100 testimony that they go to, right?
The inland flood rules with the future storms, the stormwater quantity, quality requirements, recharge requirements, there's a bunch of high thresholds that need to be met, and most of them come with a pretty substantial cost. So, if you're talking, you know, a 12 lots, major subdivision, which we're likely not going to see anytime soon here, but more so on the commercial end, that's where your head's at. One of the suggestions that I was going to have, if you read Catherine my memo on page nine, not only do I talk about the major development stormwater threshold, we took the recess here and now we're hearing from the applicant that they would agree to stay under that threshold. So, we're not talking about that big, major stormwater issue like we were just talking about a second ago. Now, what we're talking about is one home and a driveway and maybe a patio or a deck, swimming pool in the backyard. So, now if you take a look at our memo, page nine, there's an existing runoff standard section of our ordinance that really speaks to minor projects, and it doesn't get into specificity. Really, all it does is speak to not negatively impacting your neighbors. So, that's kind of where we're at now. And one of the things that I would suggest is for a house like this on a minor project, if the soils are sufficient or if the soils work, you're talking about drywells. You might be talking about rain gardens, smaller individual, single-family kind of lot stormwater features, which still come at an expense, but they can still be very effective if we have the right soil conditions. So, I think that's where we're at, and that's why I thought it was important that we get under that major development threshold. Otherwise, this plan essentially needs to be completely reworked. So, they've agreed to stay under that threshold. Now, I think we need to take it one step further and have the applicant agree to manage the runoff on their individual lot. We're managing the roof runoff, some of the driveway runoff, and I think that's really what's going to help protect some of the surrounding properties.
I get that, but I'm just saying that you're saying that 16.7, and once you go to 16.71, that's it, major expenses. So, we're going to be, I'm just questioning why we're going right to the limit where it changes.
Well, I mean, that is the limit.
Right.
Certainly, how they go about developing the lot to get to that limit is up to the applicant or the future developer.
Conditions that were.
You're right.
Were that, like, in that area, like, does it.
Well, not, I mean.
Went to that limit, would we really need, is that just something that gets triggered or is it something that it really needs to be in there for that area, otherwise, there's a problem?
The board can certainly ask the applicant to go to a little bit lower threshold if we're concerned about pushing it right to the limit of 16.7, you can ask them to go to 15.
Yeah.
I don't want to be arbitrary nor capricious.
And the actual number was 16.725, so I tried not to push it to that. I gave a little buffer.
Look, I'm just asking you, if we're going right to that limit and anything changes, what have we done?
Rather than to pick a number out, I'd rather focus on the second half of what Bill mentioned is rain gardens and some drywells because it does sound like you have a neighbor that here has put onto testimony that while may not be significant massive flooding, there's still some rainwater effects onto their property. Mr. Stires testified that there is a bit of east to west, east to west north drainage issue. So, I think to Bill's point, I think maybe we can pick something up and rather than just make it 16.5, which is a nice round number, yeah, stick to the 16.7 and let's talk about some drainage and some solutions in that respect.
I think that I would feel comfortable, I would just confirm with my client, but I would feel comfortable stipulating too that upon submission of a plot plan that at Mr. Burr's discretion, if he wants us to add any drywells, we can certainly accommodate it.
I just want to make sure that members of the public that do come out and then put onto the record that they're having some rainwater issues on their property, that they leave here feeling satisfied that, you know, we just didn't leave it up to, you know, an anonymous person they never met until tonight. So, I do want to say that that does include up to, you know, drywells, which are expensive and, you know, it could be substantial cost to your client.
I would say yes. I mean, again, I think Bill mentions it in his review saying at the time of plot plan, and we would, that would be a condition of some additional stormwater measures such as a rain garden. I don't think drywells would work in this particular, I mean, the soils in Bridgewater are, they're not drywall soils.
Yep.
But if we try at something other than some sort of stormwater controls, we would agree to that. And Bill and I can work that out.
All right, and just so members of the public that do come out, they're leaving here that we're going to improve, and this is your testimony, you're the expert, not me, that we're going to net improve the stormwater situation on these properties.
Yes.
They'll be better than what they are.
Yes.
Today.
Agreed.
You okay with that?
I am.
All right, Mr. Gieske, you good?
Yeah.
All right.
What are we specifying?
Take us through it, Bill.
Sorry, Bruce, I didn't hear the question.
Board member.
What are we specifying?
16.7.
16.7 is the max percentage that proposed Lot 402 can be developed to for the lot coverage. So, has to stay under 16.7. The ordinance allows up to 18%.
Okay.
So, they're going to stay under 16.7 on Lot 402. But they're also going to install individual stormwater facilities on this lot to capture and manage the runoff from the impervious surfaces that are proposed. So, they can develop up to 16.7, but whatever they develop in that window, they're going to manage the runoff on this lot from. If that makes sense.
Were something mentioned about deed restricting? Do we need to do that?
I think you should because I think it's a fair point that the owner might not even become aware of it. It gets, you know, the resolution just gets put in the file and then over time it would go away, perhaps. But if there's a deed notice place of record, then every time the property sells, that would come up and it would be pretty prevalent in a title search.
If I may, I didn't, I would prefer not to have it be a deed restriction. I'd rather it be more of a deed notice where I can reference the resolution number and say that per resolution.
We could do it as a notice, yeah. Yeah, it would be a notice, right? So, it's a deed notice that basically says, hey, take notice that there is this restriction of 16.7 maximum impervious coverage on this lot and you can't exceed it.
Opposed by the board.
Though the ordinance might be larger than that.
But that includes, Bill, your requirements for the stormwater management so that we're trying to avoid having them become a major subdivision because of the expenses associated with that. But we're saying that you can only go up to that max number as long as they provide some stormwater management plan for the property as it exists now so as not to make it worse for the neighbor who's here today saying, I'm already getting water on the property.
Are we going to suggest what stormwater management options they might utilize?
I don't think the board needs to suggest the specific options. I think there's a number of different ways they can manage the runoff, some of which frankly are going to depend on the soil conditions on the property. So, Craig is going to need to do a little bit of work to determine what the most appropriate measure is, but it could be any number of different features. But I don't think we need to get into specifics as long as Rich Craft's a condition that addresses the spirit of what we need, I think we'd be covered.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm okay.
We have to comply with your ordinance anyways.
All right, the testimony was yours. I totally interrupted it.
That's okay. I don't have anything else on the drainage unless there's any questions for me, but I had just two other quick questions for Craig. Craig, the testimony was for proposed Lot 402. You want to connect to the sewer in Country Club, right? And that's the whole discussion about the private sanitary sewer easement?
Correct. That was also shown on the previous approval, so.
I should know this, and I'm embarrassed to say that I don't off the top of my head. Do you know, is that the section of Country Club that was just resurfaced? Was this just repaved in this area? Are you outside of those limits?
I mean, the alternative is there is a sanitary sewer in front of the lot to the south.
Okay.
I would prefer not to extend the main. If we can bring a lateral from there into our lot, six of one, half of another.
I just, I would hate to disturb new pavement.
There's a requirement under ordinance where.
There's a moratorium. Yeah, it's five years. Well, five years may even be seven. Either way, you either have this option or you have that option. We have a moratorium if in fact it's within those limits and it'll have to be dealt with.
Yeah, that or you pave curb to curb.
There, that is one of the conditions.
Because I mean, if we then switch to Eisenhower, we're extending the road anyway. So, that could be the solution.
Yeah, if, you know, if you were to pave curb to curb, there are some provisions of the ordinance that allow you to disturb a road under moratorium. We don't want just random pavement cuts, as you know.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If we switch over to Eisenhower.
Okay.
One, I mean, you're looking at two lots now, so it might be a better option, but we can work that out.
Okay. And last question, landscaping. Any sense, any sense how many trees have to be removed?
They are marked on the plans as we show it now.
Okay.
I just didn't show the replacement because it was conceptual.
Do you know how many trees there are to be removed?
I think maybe half a dozen.
14, sound right? 14, sound right?
Whatever ones have the X's on them. But again, that would be done at the time of plot plan. So, when it's actually designed, we would come in and do the replacement trees then.
So, I guess the only question I have is how do we memorialize that now so that if somebody was to build, if this gets approved and somebody goes to build the house in three years, how do we make sure that the plot plan that gets submitted includes an issue like replanting 14 trees?
Wouldn't the plot plan have to comply with your tree replacement ordinance?
Well, in this case, I think we're looking at the subdivision ordinance that requires, I think it's a one-for-one for every tree. I think it's a two-and-a-half-inch caliber tree gets replaced in addition to the street trees that you're proposing. So, it's 14 replacement trees.
Plus street.
15?
15. So, I just want to make sure that doesn't get lost in the details.
Again, I can make a list on the cover sheet of the conditions of approval.
On the subdivision plan?
Yeah.
That's going to be signed.
Yeah.
And then that'll be the record document.
Yeah.
So, we're at 15 replacement plus street trees?
15 replacement plus street trees.
Got it.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Well, the replacement.
I think street trees are separate.
No, but what I'm saying, say the actual house for the plot plan disturbs fewer trees. I think the plot plan will need to comply with the ordinance for the tree removal and replacement at the time of plot plan approval.
The tree is here tomorrow.
Well, if you take out less trees, then hey, we're net positive on the tree placement in Bridgewater. So, let's be happy about that, and maybe the county can talk to you and they can take the two that you're, maybe you're applying here.
I'm not saying that we're opposed to that. I just have a genuine question. If, not part of, Bill, if it's not part of a subdivision and someone goes in, submits a plot plan that shows the removal of 15 trees, irrespective of the subdivision requirements, doesn't the ordinance require that they plant replacement trees or make a payment in lieu? Where it's only connected to site plan and subdivisions? Okay, I didn't realize that. Okay, so then.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, though. If we put the note on there saying that it shall comply with this section at the time of plot plan.
The way the language reads, and I put it in the review memo, is it's specifically connected to a planning board or zoning board application for a subdivision or single-family or two-family use. So, it's specifically related to the application, so I do think that the condition should be imposed directly. Even if the plot plan changes, there should be a replacement calculation. That's what you're showing tonight, and that's what the ordinance requirement is.
Yeah, and I do see your point. If we take out less trees, we shouldn't have to plant more trees, but.
Or if we take out more trees?
Yeah, if it's the other way.
I would, I'm open to whatever the board is inclined to do, obviously, but I just thought.
This comes back to Mr. Kulaq's issue. It's like a quasi-bifurcated case.
It becomes a hard enforcement issue because if this goes through compliance, then it's out of our hands and it's in the building department, and then the ability to go inspect the landscaping is, you have to go back through to see what they removed, what they replaced, and then Bill does the inspection, so.
Now, where issues like this, same with the drainage, where they would get caught is when the future developer, whether it's this applicant or not, go to pull their construction permits for the home. The internal process is to check the records and make sure that we have signed site plan or subdivision plans that get attached to the construction permit application.
Could we cap the maximum removal at 15?
Oh, you absolutely could.
Maybe, is that one way around this? We just cap 15 maximum trees removed?
Do we want to give, just in case there was a possibility that there was more since we're agreeing to replace them anyway, do we want to cap it on a little more just in case? I mean, what if somebody wants to, what if 10 years from now, after the home is built, somebody needs to remove a tree because they want to install a pool? I don't know if that would.
Well, they would still be allowed to remove the trees under the yearly requirement with the town.
Then the tree removal ordinance kicks in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
They have to comply with that.
Unless they come back to the board.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
But my recommendation is that at a minimum, these subdivision plans get updated, to Craig's point, to clearly delineate these issues on these plans. Maybe not in specificity, but at least in note form, some type of notation so that it's clear when the permits get pulled.
Mr. Silber, you're a good actor. You come to this board and you always do what you say, and I really respect that, and I thank you for that. I'm only chairman for another few months. I don't know if I'll be chairman next year. That's your alternative. Clearly, I'm hot about the trees right now, and I've always been since, you know, I've been on this board since 2014. You can call an audible. There's 45 minutes left tonight. You can come back next year. That's when the next available spot is. If you don't want to do this, that's, and I don't fault you. That's good lawyering, I think. I don't know if I'll be chairman. My term is also up in December 31st. Who knows if I'll even be here? Kick it till next year and come back.
No, I think I was just trying to, it's a fair request. I just was trying to protect future.
And I honestly mean that. Thank you for everything you do. You operate, I think, very well with the town, and we like seeing you because you're a man of your word and your clients, I think, hire you because of that. I am going to tell you, though, I'm sticking on the tree business. I'm upset about it. Every case, I fight for trees, but the whole board is sick of me bringing it up. Come back next year. I probably won't be here.
You know, I lived across the street from that up there.
All right. Now, and Mr. Stires, same with you. You're a local guy. You know, I see you all over town and you guys, you take a money for a service, but you have integrity, and I thank you for that. But I'm also telling you, maybe it's easier if you just come back next year and you may have a chairman or may not even have a zoning board member that's just a stickler for the trees.
No, we'll take the 15.
Yeah.
You take.
I don't think it's going to make a difference.
What if more happen to come down? We're going to cap it at 15. And if you happen to take less, you're still going to put in 15 plus the street trees. Is that okay, Mr. Burr?
Yes.
Okay.
I think if the board is comfortable with capping it at 15 and the applicant is comfortable.
And by all means, if any board members want to chime in.
I think that's fine.
I have a question. How many trees are there on the lot now?
Very wooded.
A real lot. I didn't count them specifically, but I did mark that there were 15 coming down.
We don't know.
So, we have, I have on this plan, there's a limited disturbance and the grading and the theoretical house, and we're all those, within the limits of disturbance and there's no grading, those trees are staying, but the ones that are impacted are coming down, and that's the 15.
So, we're going to cap it at 15, unless you say otherwise.
I think it's a reasonable compromise because I think practically speaking, whether the house is bigger, smaller, move it around, those are coming down anyway.
And if you take down less, you're still putting in 15. All right.
I'm good.
All right.
I, everything you said, I understand. I'm just trying to work this out for a second. So, let's just say there was a miscounting, and in order to build a home, you needed to take down 16. Logically speaking, does that mean the applicant is to return to the board? And if the subdivision's already perfected, how do you amend the subdivision? Like, you can't, it's already perfected.
I don't have an answer. I think maybe you table this thing and come back in January.
No, you just said we cap it at 15.
We did cap it at 15, but if that doesn't work, I get it. You're a man of integrity. Come back in January.
But I don't think that's going to make a difference.
Make it 20. I'm just kidding.
So, if it's less than 15, we're still doing 15. If it's more than 15, we're still doing 15.
Perfectly said.
Perfect.
We okay with that?
You're not motivated to take down trees. We don't want to take down trees.
I would just add the caveat that maybe that includes that they preserve trees to the greatest, mature trees to the greatest extent, so it doesn't motivate anybody to take down more.
I think that's good language. Can we put that language in there?
Say that again?
That the applicant should preserve existing mature trees to the greatest extent possible.
And in lieu of that, they will be, it will be capped at 15.
Correct.
You coming back in January or are we going to keep going?
Keep going.
All right. Bill, you are on the mic.
I'm all done.
All right.
I have one question for you, though, about the road extension and stormwater management. You said we were approaching the limit of the size, the length of the road for a storm drain. And I don't think I really understood what you meant by that. There is a storm drain on the extension that was previously built or not?
There is a storm drain at the beginning of the prior extension. So, the furthest point from this property, there are storm drains. So, normally, when you lay out storm drains on a project, you want to make sure that they're spaced, depending on the volume of runoff they're going to be collected, no more than 400 feet apart. In this case, they'd be right about 400 feet apart, meaning the end of the new road extension where the existing set of inlets are. I'm not aware of there being any drainage issues on Eisenhower itself. A lot of the concerns that I hear is runoff coming from the individual homes, the roofs, the driveways, and how these lots are all intermingled. Off the top of my head, I don't believe there to be a problem with Eisenhower, with the drainage on Eisenhower. It's just capturing.
Or the future drainage onto this new road, which is going to collect water, and you're going to shoot it down to the existing drain. you're going to shoot it down to the existing drain at the beginning of the street, which is roughly 400 feet away. The question for me is, should you require them to put one in, something short of the 400 feet, so that you can run that drain into the existing drain? I don't have an answer. I'm just asking the question.
It's possible. It's possible that they could install it if need be. I don't think they're envisioning that.
Right.
I would be frankly, John, more concerned, so the way Craig graded this out, there's going to be a high point right near the corner of this new lot.
Yes.
So I don't think, I don't think anything's being done that would inundate the system to the south. I would be more concerned to make sure that the 75 or 100-foot piece of the new portion of Eisenhower pointing to the north, that that portion doesn't drain water somewhere where it's going to have a negative impact. And I think if necessary, there are things that can be done to manage the runoff, slow it down, not allow it to accumulate and head towards Roosevelt.
If it's, because you have that crown point, you've got a division in the way in which the water runs, and then the water that's running, let's say, in the opposite direction from the storm drain, what's going to happen to it? It just goes into the.
That's the area that, that's the area I'm speaking of. Right now, the way it's shown, it just goes into the northerly piece of the unimproved section of Eisenhower. That's the way it's shown right now. There are things, though, I think, that can be done in that area that will ensure that the properties to the north are protected, and that's an area I'd like to take a look at.
Right, and that's what I'm anxious to hear about, how we might add some requirements that they aren't able to manage that, if not by doing what I was talking about earlier, but by doing what you're talking about, some things that could improve that drainage. You can, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, we have the homeowner there. Do you want to allow him to speak at this point?
Please, please.
Yes, sir. So I think I understand where you're pointing to in that area. So just to give you a little bit of information around this, I usually go out to that area when it's pouring rain to take a look, to make sure that everything is fine, because it really gushes in that area. That's the area that I go to scared, to make sure that everything is going to be okay. Should probably see when it pours at one time. And I've heard my neighbors in President's Drive also complain about that portion of Eisenhower there where we traverse on the sidewalk. It gets covered, there's some accumulation of gravel and dirt and mud, and I think that even the wooden planks that were put there often get rotted, and the kids pass there. I've heard this from my neighbors, I didn't experience it myself. The shrubbery grows very tall there, which is probably also due to the water accumulation. It ponds near my metal stick that marks the lot. So it's kind of like out there in that area. It stays for a while. So just to give you a little bit of flavor, that is indeed an area that we see water going there pretty significantly.
Thank you. And, Bill, you were saying that because of the crown and that portion of the road which extends might be dumping water in that same area.
It's going to add to it. So I think the board is perfectly within its right to ask the applicant, at least for the extension of Eisenhower and the area across the frontage of this new lot, you certainly could ask the applicant to introduce some additional drainage measures to help with the issue that we just heard the homeowner talk about.
Well, I would certainly ask that, but I don't know what those measures would include.
We can get creative.
Okay, fair enough.
I think I've already agreed earlier that I would work with, that the applicant would work with Mr. Burr. If there were suggestions to improve runoff and stormwater management conditions associated with the extension, we're.
I think there were two aspects to that, though. One is the property upon which, that you hope will be improved upon. The other is that which is created by the road itself draining in that same direction. So those are two different things, and I want both of them covered.
We agreed to work with Mr. Burr on both sides.
So, Bill, there's a calculation that, that 28 additional feet of new roadway? How would we calculate, given the current situation? How would we know that we would need another stormwater grate on the street? Because the closest one I saw was at the corner.
Yeah, it's down at the corner. You would take a look at the contributory drainage area, the amount of runoff in a given storm. Typically, you'd look at the 25-year storm. So you'd look at that amount of water that flows to a specific inlet. And then every inlet can accept only a certain amount of water through the grates. So we would just want to take a look at it. If you want to get technical, you size it that way.
I guess my second point is, we just spent an hour basically talking about why this isn't a major subdivision in terms of stormwater, and I think we acquiesced to the applicant that, you know, we didn't push them into that, and we created some boundaries and some caps to save them on additional costs. And it sounds like the applicant is stipulating that they will work with you on drainage on property, but I'm concerned that if there is a situation that develops where Bill looks at this and we say, hey, we do need a stormwater grate installed on the street, that's a significant additional expense, if you're willing to do that. If he deems that necessary, because I think this board has now spent an hour working to try and keep you out of that major threshold, you know, because that's a whole new ball of wax in terms of dollars and development costs, that I think this board has now, you know, fleshed out, set caps, and worked extensively on. I just want to make sure that when you, if Bill does say, hey, you do need a stormwater grate installed on the street.
One second.
While they're conferring, I'll just add that the road that is being built has a crown point. So it's not that we're adding so much volume to the water going down to the storm sewer, but rather, we're splitting the water, and we're sending some in the opposite direction. And that's what Bill and I were talking about, implementing some controls or some ways to mitigate that drainage. So it's not so much that we're looking for the additional storm drain, we're trying to manage the water which is flowing in the opposite direction from that which would be flowing toward the existing storm drain. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well done.
I would say that, again, we stipulated that we would work with Bill to get this to a point where it's acceptable to him. I still agree to keep this under the threshold of 10,560. I have a pretty good idea of just hearing the neighbor and being out to the site. It's, I think the problem is that corner where Roosevelt makes a 90, there's a low spot right in the corner there that I think is problematic, probably because there's no way out for the water. And there's a little swell right there, and there's, somebody's put down like wooden planks. It's almost like a, what you want to call it, pallet. So when kids walk from Roosevelt, they walk across the pallet, and then they can get to the school. And then that pallet is over the little swell. So I think that little tweak right there, which I don't think is going to be too costly, would make a vast improvement to, you know, what these concerns are. Because I think all the water really drains to that little point right there, and I think if there is a problem and it's a simple fix, I think Bill and I could work it out, because I'm pretty sure that is the concern from the neighbor.
I just want to make sure that, though, if it does approach substantial expense.
Well, I think the other thing is, if it gets to that point, we come back to the board.
That's what I'm going to say, is that, you know, ultimately, you're going to have to come back if you don't like the solution.
Yes, I agree. But I'm confident that Bill and I have worked in the past a few times, and we've come and worked these things out. I don't think we'll be back. But if it gets to that point, we'll come back and we'll address it.
All right, very good.
I'm okay with that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So one of the things I just wanted to address, or at least have the applicant put on the record, is there's now a request for what's called the de minimis exception from RSIS for the cul-de-sac road. And the 2007 approval did include that some of the findings about that, that it was going to be, it was actually going to come in off of Roosevelt and be the only house served by it. So the finding in the resolution was that the exception was warranted because it would be an undue hardship to have a cul-de-sac improvement only for one home, serving one home. This is a little different now, because coming in, there are now four, there will be, there are existing four houses, and there'll be five houses that'd be served by the cul-de-sac. And I just want to make sure that the applicant follows the requirements under the RSIS under 5:21-3.1A that talks about why this board would have the authority to grant that exception. Because as part of that waiver request through, and the request through the RSIS, that we have, that has to be provided to the DCA essentially. And so it probably would be good to have as part of the record. And so those requirements note that the de minimis exceptions can be granted as reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of the standards, but if and only if the literal enforcement of one or more provisions of the standards is impracticable, or will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the development in question. And then the exception, that the grant of the exception shall be based on a finding that it meets four criteria, which is that it's consistent with the intent of the act establishing the RSIS, reasonable, limited, not in duly burdensome, burdened some, meets the needs of public health and safety, and takes into account existing infrastructure as possible surrounding future development. So I think those things just need to be put on the record, if not provided in writing, so that when it is transmitted to the DCA, that the resolution at least reflects it or something reflects it, because that development application will actually need to be provided, or that, you know, the need to be notified to the state that there is an exception warranted.
Certainly provide a justification in writing. My understanding is, based upon the testimony we heard, is that there is safe and efficient ability for emergency apparatus to turn around based upon the easement that we're granting. So I think that we're meeting the intent and spirit of RSIS, and that because the paper sheet is only so wide, I think we're maximizing, correct if I'm mistaken, aren't we maximizing the width of the paper road and what we're proposing?
Yeah, I mean, we would only be, for those number of houses, we'd only need to be 20-foot wide, and we're 28. And again, when I looked at the RSIS tonight, unless your professionals can state something specific, I think the RSIS is vague as far as the requirements of it. So the fire access is more related to the fire code, and we do, with the in and out, the hammerhead, I guess you could call it, of the driveway, we do comply with the fire code of New Jersey.
Well, either, and I was going to bring this up after we closed up the RSIS, but the township code also does have requirements related to dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs under 126-241.G, under the design standards that I noticed in the, or referenced in the review memo. And so I think an additional design waiver would need to be requested and granted from this board for that as well. But it has nothing, it doesn't note anything about fire or emergency services. I think it does require that there is a truck turning and that emergency vehicles, just like RSIS, that there's a requirement that those things be shown in the case that the radius complies for an emergency vehicle. But, you know, I think the RSIS, or at least the township's standards, do make a requirement that just a dead-end street would need a cul-de-sac, so one-way access would require it. So, you know, I think Mr. Silbert just provided a little bit about what the request is. I just want to make sure that the standard is met, that the literal enforcement is impracticable or will exact undue hardship. I think the 2007 resolution noted it, and I just want to make sure it's clear here as well, if we're, if the board is willing to grant that exception.
If I can expand also, you look at the prior, the subdivisions to the south, you know, that there was clearly practical difficulty associated with creating a cul-de-sac. Otherwise, that would have been created in connection with the subdivisions that precede this application. So I think just, I'm looking at the boards, I don't recall if the, I don't know if an application was submitted to the planning board or the zoning board, but it was to the planning board. So I would imagine that the planning board would have required a cul-de-sac if it was possible. I don't think it's feasible, and I think that we're accomplishing the same goal by our proposed hammerhead turnaround that Craig's discussed at length.
And again, I think that if the board is looking to grant that exception, that we do get that in writing as well, as it'll be part of any kind of transmittal to the DCA. And then I think also the board would have to, just to cover the bases, would also have to grant the design waiver from the township sections, which cover dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs.
Probably the last cul-de-sac exemption was this case.
If they got it. I'd be curious to see what the paperwork, which is why I wouldn't necessarily rely upon the idea that just because they didn't get it means that they don't have to do it now. If this is the last developable lot here, then why not now?
Well, the one in 2007 got it, and the one in 2020 got it, because there's, it's the same setup.
2020 didn't come to this board. I'm saying the last cul-de-sac exemption this board granted probably was your 2007 case.
I think that the real problem, and I don't know if I'm straying from what we're talking about, is that the paper street is supposed to connect to Roosevelt, and no one wants that effectuated, but that's how it's supposed to be.
And as long as you can supply in writing what Catherine needs, I think we're on the same page.
Excellent.
Okay.
Other than that, I think we've covered the trees, and we have the conditions related to the tree replacement covered. And then I probably think we just need to hear from their planner about the D5 variance.
Which I would love to do very quickly.
All right. Just again, members of the public that have any questions on Mr. Stires' testimony, now is the time to approach. Seeing none? All right, you want to do your planner? Thank you, Mr. Stires.
Matt, would you raise your right hand, please, so you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And would you state your name for the record, please?
Matthew Flynn, F-L-Y-N-N.
And do you know what a Reader's Digest version is?
I'll try to keep you within about an hour and a half, if that's okay, Mr. Ollin.
All right, Mr. Flynn, your license is in good standing?
That's correct.
All right, we accept you as an expert in planning.
Thank you, sir. I'll jump right in here.
Please do.
Yeah, so really, as the board heard, we're talking about the creation of two new lots, one of which is 98% conforming in terms of lot area, the other is 100% conforming. Really, the main question before the board this evening is whether that 98% reduction in lot area causes a substantial detriment to the public. Again, not discounting all the concerns about stormwater and the like, from a planning standpoint and from a variance standpoint, that really is the key test here. Really, I think we can look to three main considerations, one being that the degree of departure is very minimal. The other is that the proposed lot will, even though it is undersized, and we are requiring a density variance by way of that, I did take a look at the surrounding neighborhood, and we are compatible with both of these surrounding densities, as well as the surrounding lot areas. And really, the third thing is that what we see on our conceptual plan is that we can really provide two houses that are in keeping and not requiring any bulk relief. What we did by placing the undersized lot where the existing home is, is really a sort of creative, creative alternative, in my opinion, than having the undersized lot being the proposed conceptual home, because now we can see that it's not speculative, we have a home here that does meet all of those bulk requirements. So in light of that, we are creating that conforming lot along Eisenhower, and by being conforming, conceivably, we will be able to comply with all of those bulk requirements, seeing that it is that 40,000 square foot that's required in the zone. This is a highly unique property in that it is substantially oversized, it's only just under the double of the minimum lot area. For two lots, we would need 80,000 square feet, and here we have 79,300 square feet. For two lots, we would need 80,000 square feet, and here we have 79,300 square feet. It's a through lot, so we do have frontage along that paper street, which we are, of course, proposing to improve. And so for those reasons, really, the planning rationale that applies to this lot would not necessarily carry forth to any of the other lots in the zone. This is a highly unique property that I think warrants the conversation that we're having this evening. So really, just quickly, the relief that we're seeking, one being, of course, the lot area variance, 39,300 square feet versus the 40,000 square feet minimum required. Again, that's 98% conforming. And then I think Mike mentioned this at the outset, that the D5 density variance is sort of a technical variance from the municipal land use law. If this were not a major subdivision, that would actually not be in play. I think the clear intent of the municipal land use law is to steer clear of D variances for single-family dwellings. But again, since this is not a minor subdivision, it is not exempt from that D5 density variance. So I'll go through the, the density, density variance testimony now. Here, again, this is really just because we are not necessarily creating a new street, but improving that paper street, which triggers that major subdivision category. When we look at the positives, the benefits of the application from the municipal land use law, I think we can look to purpose A, which is promotion of the general welfare. Not only are we extending this paper street, but we are providing additional housing stock to meet the needs of all New Jersey residents, effectuating the purpose of a single-family zone with an additional single-family home. Purpose G, variety of uses in appropriate locations. Here, again, we are talking about two lots that are essentially conforming. All in all, again, it's just under the, double the minimum lot area that's required in the zone. And even though the proposed undersized lot is 39,300 square feet, based on my analysis, it is going to remain one of the largest lots in the area. There are several undersized properties in the immediate area. Purpose I, desirable visual environment. I would say that, again, since this is a through lot, this is a more normal configuration. We have homes that front on Eisenhower, this is going to be another home fronting on Eisenhower. And we have the exhibit that the engineer provided us here that shows that this is going to really look like, sort of, the missing tooth in this development. We have these nice two rows of homes, and this is going to continue that, that trend. Purpose M is efficient use of land. Again, to the extent that we do have an undersized lot, we are substantially conforming in terms of the bulk requirements. In terms of the negative criteria, no substantial detriment to the public or to the zone. Like I said at the beginning of my testimony, really, the main test here is whether the proposed variances are going to have a substantial detriment. In this case, we are substantially compliant, again, even though we do have an undersized lot, and just to provide some real numbers here, again, it's not speculative, since this is the lot that has the existing dwelling on it. Just by way of example, front yard to the country club, we are only required to have 50 feet, we have 85 feet. Side yard, we only need 20 feet, we have 42 feet, so double. Rear yard, we only need 75 feet, we have 125 feet. The big one really is FAR, we're allowed up to .15, and we're at just about half of that, at .05. So again, from impacts to the public, this is not going to stand out as overdevelopment, in my opinion. So not a substantial departure from zoning, not a substantial departure from what we see in the neighborhood. Again, even despite the fact that this passes the eye test, I'll say, based on the exhibit that we have on the easel here, I did look at all of the properties within about 2,000 feet of the property in question, which came out to about 37 properties. The average density was about 1.5 dwelling units per acre, whereas the density that we're proposing is 1.1 dwelling units per acre. So again, it's not going to stand out as being something that's more dense than what we see in the neighborhood. I also looked at lot area within 2,000 feet, the average there was about 34,800 square feet, and of course, we're proposing over 39,000. So again, it's not going to be the smallest lot in the neighborhood, it's actually going to remain larger or equal to about 76% of the other homes or other lots that I saw in the immediate neighborhood. So really, with all that, I think the D5 density test is met here, the benefits certainly outweigh the detriments, the, the deviation is not going to be noticeable in the public eye, and of course, from a zoning standpoint, also by way of all of those bulk, bulk compliances, I would say that this is also something that is right in line with what we would like to see in this zone. So the flip, the other variance would be the C2 balancing test for the lot area variance. Really, it's part and parcel with the D5 test, the D5 is triggered because of the lot area, so I think all of that rationale really carries forth for the lot area variance as well. And we did hear about the C1 test a little bit, and that's the hardship test whereby the relief relates to the, the land dedication of the 700 square feet that resulted in the undersized lot. If we did not have that land dedication, we would actually have a compliant 80,000 square foot property. So I think there is a basis for C1, which the board did find in 2007. So I think we can look to both the C2 test, as well as the C1, the applicant only needs to meet one of those tests, but I think the application is, is bolstered by meeting both of those. So to conclude, I think what we have here is something that's highly unique, not precedent-setting, it's relative to this specific property, it makes practical sense, I mentioned, it passes the quote-unquote "eye" test, it looks like it belongs here, it's that so-called missing tooth in this nice row of two houses, both fronting on country club, as well as Eisenhower. And of course, there is some history that we talked about in terms of conditions that we hooked on this application several years ago, and of course, those are in play, to the extent applicable, as well as any conditions that we've discussed this evening. I think at this point, there really are no outstanding issues, the board really hit on the, the major concerns here, which really relate to stormwater, even though we are in keeping with lot coverage here. And, and again, just even though we do have a non-conforming lot in terms of area, that lot is still at 11.5% lot coverage. So again, even though we are talking about stormwater, this is not something that's overdeveloped by any means, in my opinion. So I think that was as brief as I could be, so if there's any questions or redirects.
I would just say that, Mr. Oller, we can mark this exhibit that Mr. Flynn referenced that was not introduced, it can be marked as A2 entitled "Aerial Rendering," today's date. And, and I think what you went over, Mr. Flynn, and correct me if I'm mistaken, is you, you kind of touched upon the Coventry Square standard and the Grub standard with respect to the D5 variance, believing that the site can absolutely withstand the de minimis or minimal increase in density, and you don't think that it will have any detrimental effect on the neighborhood benefit, construction of this project were to occur in a manner consistent with the zone's density restrictions?
Agreed. The basic test that was just referenced here is can the site accommodate the increased density? And again, the increased density is relative to that existing dwelling, which is substantially compliant with all of the bulk requirements.
Thank you. I have, I have nothing further.
All right. Board questions for Mr. Flynn and his planning testimony. Board professionals?
None for me and Mr. Chairman.
None for me either.
All right. Members of the public, questions on Mr. Flynn's testimony? All right, see none? If you want to wrap up, Mr. Silbert. Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
No, I, I won't take up the board's time, I know it's, we're past, we're very close, so thank you for allowing us, Mr. Chairman, to go a little bit over. I will have the pleasure of reappearing before the end of your term, the end of the month.
Yes.
You haven't gotten rid of me, and I haven't gotten rid of you.
Yep.
I, I think that this application was perhaps not as straightforward as I initially represented, because the board pointed out a number of concerns, and because of that, the public is, is now going to benefit from a better application than really what, what we had originally come in through, through the proper vetting of your professionals and through the board, so I'm glad that we were, we were able to work with you, and that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Silbert. I, I, just one thing before Rich takes us through stipulations, I, I just want you to understand that this drainage issue is a risk, you're taking a risk here, and I don't want you to appear before Judge Miller, whoever gets this case, and say, "The zoning board said this." We're leaving it open to Mr. Burr's interpretation of what this property needs in terms of stormwater. You may not like the answer, but you're agreeing to comply, or you're going to come back here, just so we're crystal clear on that.
It is crystal clear that is what we are agreeing to.
All right. Thank you very much. Rich, you want to take us through?
Sure. So there are a few. The, the existing shed's going to now be removed, even though it says to remain on the plan, so that'll be removed. With respect to the street trees, and it'll be more in this in a second, but you will match the street trees which were used to, to the south on Eisenhower Avenue on another project.
Mm-hmm.
With respect to the 50 by 34 access easement, there'll be a written easement to the township with enforcement rights that you and I are going to work on. You'll comply, the, I guess, the prior 2007 resolution conditions will be in, in this resolution, that'll include, the sidewalks will either be installed, or there'll be a contribution, you'll repair country club road sidewalks if, if repairs are required.
To the, to the extent that 2007 conditions are applicable, because there are conditions that aren't applicable.
Right, right. There will be a developers agreement. There'll be a sewer easement through lot 4.01, which will benefit 4.02, and that'll be subject to, to bills in, in my review. You'll comply with the township engineer's stormwater requirements, of course, all the requirements in the reports. With respect to impervious coverage, the coverage shall not exceed 16.7% on lot 4.01. Sorry, that's 4.02, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yep, on 4.02. And if development on 4.02 does exceed 16.7 impervious coverage percentage, then the developer of lot 4.02 will comply with major stormwater development regulations, or otherwise will have to come back to this board to modify this condition. All water runoff created by the development of lot 4.02 shall be managed directly on that lot 4.02 by installing all stormwater management facilities on the lot, to the satisfaction of the township engineer, including the installation of storm sewer inlets in Eisenhower Avenue, if that's determined to be necessary. Right? And again, you have the option to come back to modify a condition. You'll file a deed notice with respect to those items. Regarding trees, you'll preserve existing mature trees to the extent possible, and the applicant shall not remove more than 15 trees, and shall satisfy the tree replacement ordinance, but shall install a minimum of 15 replacement trees. Will also satisfy the street tree ordinance. And I think that's all.
Did we get cul-de-sac exemption RSIS need approval language?
Yeah, I, I, it's not a condition.
Okay.
But yes, I will have the RSIS language in, oh, you want a letter from them, though, right? So that'll be a condition to provide their, their rationale.
Please.
Yep. Gotcha.
I just want to ask for clarification on the trees one more time, because I don't understand. So we're, we're able to remove up to 15 trees in order for respect to subdivision, but somebody 10 years from now will have to remove trees under your ordinance, are they permitted to do so?
Yes. As a property owner, Catherine, are they allowed to take one out a year, unless they're dead?
I think it might be one to three.
If it's less, you're still doing 15.
Yeah.
And if you're doing more?
You're not doing more than 15. If the property owner someday wants to take down a tree, they would have to comply with Bridgewater Tree Ordinance.
So we're back for a minimum of 15 trees, you know, more than 15, you'll also...
You're coming back.
I think there's no...
Yeah, you're taking out 15 maximum.
Yeah, there's no option to go over 15.
Okay. I'm glad we caught, we talked about it. So we'll see you in January?
I think, I think... Only by January are we going to want them down.
Okay.
So are you saying that you think you need to take more than 15 trees down?
Do I have to wait for it to happen?
So this, this, you're asking for a bifurcated case, and that's really what this board tries to avoid, no matter how big or small. We don't want bifurcated cases. So if you don't want 15, come back in January. I won't be the chairman, you can submit a bifurcated case.
I'm going to have to deal with that.
All right, so we, why don't you read it again, and you make sure that Mr. Stires and Mr. Silbert are okay?
I don't think we're that understanding.
It's 15 max. You do less, you're still doing 15. If you take down more, you got a problem.
You got to come back here.
If you take down more, you're going to have the same fate as, as the county has, where we're going to go to the satellite, and we're going to, I'm going to throw the book at you, or whoever's here is going to throw the book at you.
Say that you come in with a plot plan, that you're saying you can't take down one, I would say you pay for it.
I say you, I, I, no, don't do it, you come back to the board. That, that's the tree policy, and...
The board has to approve the trees?
Yes, because you're stipu, you're stipulating to that for approval.
I'm, I'm just confused that if the, in the future, we, we had, we needed to remove 17 to construct the dwelling, we were willing to replace it with 17 trees, I don't, I just don't understand where the loss is, versus if we have to come back, that...
Because the township basically mandates that you only have to replace with an eight-inch tree, is that correct, Catherine? And if you remove a, a mature tree, you can't really plant a mature tree, you're never going to get a like-and-kind instrument back in the ground that matches what you've taken out.
No, we're applying the work. I'm lying, we want more.
In other words, if you were taking down 20, you don't want to have to come back to the board. Well, that's not the case.
Well, why? It's just that we just have...
Why didn't you mark 20 trees then on your submission tonight?
That's where I'm confused now.
If it's 20, that's 20, so mark 20, we could have talked about 20 all night tonight.
Probably not knowing what to build it, right?
That's the problem.
It's okay to not know.
Yeah, but, but that's a bifurcated case, and this board really pushes applicants to stay away from bifurcation, because these are the problems of a bifurcated application. And under New Jersey state law, and again, I'm not an attorney, but I'll refer to the ones to, to me on the left, cases that are part and parcel, have information that are pivotal and structural to a bifurcated case, we can deny because we need more information. So if we need more information that you're going to take out, 20 trees, 25 trees, let's just deny it, and you come back with a full application.
Um, I don't, I mean, I don't know if you already had it.
You can.
We didn't have to show the house, we just, we just rehearse. I just feel, we're, I think, it's, it's almost silly to go back and work, because you didn't, I think you're going to say you did, and I would agree with you.
But I'm saying come back in January, you get a new board, you get a new chairman, maybe they'll look at things differently. I, I'm not the law, I'm just, I'm, I'm one vote.
I'm just going to make a quick suggestion, if you're unsure as to how many trees you're going to be cutting down...
We'll take another look.
Are you unsure as to how many trees are there now?
No, I'm sure of this plan and the number of trees.
Right.
If we don't, don't say the house is different from the original, and take down one more tree. But if we, in my day, uncomfortable with it, and, and we, I guess, we work on that and so...
But again, just to make it very clear on the record, for, if a judge does hear this, we were not arbitrary in pulling 15, that's your number.
We're not, we're not proposing to build that dwelling, that's why I think it's arbitrary. I think it is arbitrary, because we don't...
So that goes to the credibility of your expert then, tonight?
Well, but, but... Lot is fully conforming, the lot's conforming, so that's, referring to it as a bifurcated application, I want to create a lot.
Now, I, I, a quasi-bifurcation, because at a lot of points, you're not a bifurcated, but on this point, you're asking the board to kind of suspend disbelief, and you want to come back and let us know. We, we just want a definitive answer.
On the number of trees to be removed?
Yes.
But first, we have, but we're... Firmly repelled, but we're not proposing to remove any trees. We are proposing that.
Okay. So let's set it at zero. That's wonderful.
Yeah, but I'm confused now because you count with 15. If you, and you take down 12, fine, replace 15. Now, what if all of a sudden, if you do this different design of a house and you're taking down 30?
That's why I was suggesting just a one-for-one replacement condition across the
You can't possibly replace mature trees with like-in-kind mature trees. That's kind of the, that's our point.
But that ordinance is based on the site plan and subdivision review process. It's not deferred to the tree removal process on an individual home.
So it's 10:15. I read a statement that we stop at 10 o'clock. You've been in front of this board many, many times. Would you like, as we deliberate, would you like each board member to chime in on that? I'm open to doing that. You know what else would be a major inquisition is if we made you conform to a major stormwater development plan and we spent an hour trying to save your client a lot of money and keep everybody safe. So the board went out of their way for you already once tonight.
I think fair that the board worked with us and we worked with the board. I mean, both sides came together on it, but I want to keep anybody here. We're saying we're going to do this.
You don't have to.
I'm asking the board to at least deliberate on the suggestions that I have.
And I think that's a fair suggestion. So why don't we open up deliberations? Rich, if you've got all the stipulations out?
That was all of it.
All right. So Jim, why don't you open us up and we'll see if we have the will for even a vote tonight?
I can't vote on, I can't even offer an opinion now with the open end on the trees.
So it's not open end now. If I'm hearing him correctly, they're going to agree to a maximum of 15 trees to be removed when they submit their plot plan to build this house. And if they relocate a house, because this is just someone's guesstimate of where a house might be in size, if that is altered to be in a place that would require 16 or more trees to be removed, they would come back to modify that condition.
Are you agreeing to that?
I am. I am agreeing to that. I did ask the board to consider my suggestion.
It's what you're agreeing to is what I have to deliberate on.
Yeah, that's what they're agreeing to. His point is that if this were a fully conforming lot anywhere in the township today, and they came in to pull a building permit to construct a house on a fully conforming lot and they were going to take down, say, 20 trees, right? They would have to comply with the tree replacement ordinance.
Ordinance.
And he's saying, why can't we have that?
Why can't he?
Yeah.
What? Why can't he have? He doesn't conform. If you conformed, you would. Okay, so you're agreeing to the 15?
Excuse me, can I just jump in here a minute because I don't want to stay here any later than I have to? If they have to come back in January or February, can we give them an expedited review? I mean, I think that's what their concern is.
There's nothing further for the board to review because we're not, we wouldn't make a change. It's conceptual. We're creating a lot and one day, somebody's going to submit a plot plan. So I've already said that the applicant would do the 15-tree removal. I'm saying we will do it, agree to that stipulation. I've also asked the board to, I'm making it known that we don't want to do it, and I asked the board to consider alternatives. But I don't want to keep the board any further.
All right. And the specific alternative you suggested is for a one-for-one replacement. So if, in fact, they have to remove 20, 25, whatever the number is, they'll replace it with 20 or 25 trees. In my opinion, I think that's reasonable. So I would support that. You guys are, your opinion, have your opinion, you may express it.
Ready golf? Who else?
I'm for a one-for-one replacement because if, can we do one-for-one replacement, minimum 15?
Yes.
Does the number of trees that are removed have any effect on the stormwater or anything else topographically on that property, whether to be more than X removed?
It absolutely has an impact on stormwater, and I think that's part of why this is in the board's purview, to limit the number of trees.
This is why we're, this is all about, we spend a lot of time on the stormwater issue. So if he just told me that the number of trees that are removed has no impact whatsoever on the stormwater issues on that property, I would say, yeah, one-for-one is a great idea. But it does, right? So if it does, and we spend a lot of time figuring out how can we get you from the 16.7% and this and that, like, what do we do? What do you want, which is, should we want to change something else so we can forget about the one-for-one for the trees?
I won't waste the board's time. I've already asked the board what to consider. I hear your concern if there was major stormwater management infrastructure implemented on the property, talking about major, major tree removal. So, yeah.
I'm with Mr. Gajasky on this. Mr. Kulak says he's okay with one-for-one. It sounds like these gentlemen are, so, Mr. Fresco, Mr. Garrett, Mrs. Amin, your thoughts?
You go. Go first. All right. So I think, listen, I sympathize with the fact that you put it on the record and you showed us the house, and I get that. You know, you guys are, Mr. Stires does an amazing job, but you know, you guys are pros. I think that maybe we should just move it a little, maybe compromise a little bit more. I don't know that I'm for one-for-one because it's a bad night to be arguing about trees. And I'm with Mr. who's always about trees. I'm a tree guy myself. So I think maybe, maybe we can move it a little bit more and get it to like, I don't know, and 20 is too many. You know, 17 and a half, 18 trees, you know, something like that, give you a little bit more flexibility because coming back in January doesn't do anything and coming back in seven months when you're building a house doesn't, nobody wants to come back here. So I don't know, maybe we can move it a little bit, go to 18 trees. But I think if you do that, I think if you do that, the minimum goes with it. I think the minimum should go with it. I think you go to 18, then that's the new minimum. Yeah. I mean, you know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How about, anything over removal of 15 would warrant a replacement of trees at a two-for-one requirement?
Winner, 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 winner.
Nancy gave me the idea.
Works for me.
Yes.
We're good? All right. Well done. Good job, Nancy. Welcome back. All right.
So otherwise, I support it and I support the revised option.
You good with that, Rich?
Yep.
All right. Mrs. Amin, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I agree with that one.
All right. I agree with the board as well. Would open the floor to a motion, please?
Wait, wait, wait. Over 15, it's two-for-one.
Yes.
Yes.
So if he does 30?
For the amount over 15.
Over 15.
Yes. I'm for it.
Okay. Do I have a motion, please?
I move. That's voted. I'm going home.
All right. So just very, so Jim was the motion. You were the second?
Yes.
All right. We don't hear you. All right. Yes, yes. Yes, with the conditions above 15, two-for-one.
Yes.
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 No, I don't think the number of trees that are being replaced has anything to do with the stormwater management on that property. Are you who?
Mr. Gajasky was a no.
That was a no.
Mr. Seacat?
Yes.
All right. Six-one, you're approved. Thank you, Mr. Silver. All right. Don't leave. We have an adjournment for Cafe Emilia that was for tonight.
Correct.
We have to tell the public when that case is and if there's going to be further notice.
So they will not be further noticed. That's what the adjournment request that we received stipulated.
Okay.
It's adjourned to December 9th without further notice.
7:00 PM, this room.
Yes. And I have one other item, if I could, Mr. Chairman, when we voted on the Wager application.
Yes.
We should have called Mr. Seacat as the seventh. I miscounted. So if we could just get Mr. Seacat's vote on Wager for a seventh, he would be voting for Mr. Sweeney since he's absent.
Okay. Mr. Seacat, your vote on the Wager application?
Yes.
That would be seven.
All right. And then for the board, our next meeting is October 28th, 7:00 PM. We have Bridgewater Storage and Wakovich.
Comment?
Yes.
They'll be voting in here, so we need another room.
So Nancy, we'll need another space to have this meeting on October 28th?
I believe open early voting.
Early voting starts on the 25th.
This room will be locked.
So what we've done in the past is we've met in the conference room next door.
Yeah, we had, we'll work that out because they sometimes put the machines.
Early voting, yeah, it happens in here. All right. Everyone, thank you very much for listening to my trees and working so hard tonight. I have motion to adjourn.
Starbucks is over.
Yeah, it's over.
Yeah. And the resolution was adopted.